We don't have to be in the B school. I'm not in the B school, I'm in the communication school. So I probably wouldn't even know them. Probably would be surprised. Well, you'd be surprised. You'd be surprised. Well, I am 45, if that makes you feel embarrassed. So I was five.
All right, well Elizabeth works on getting the presentation up for today's public hearings. I'll just start with a welcome to this afternoon's planning commission meeting. We'll get started here in a moment. Before we do, for those that have not been with us before, I'll just run through kind of the outline of how each case will run. We will have staff present the case to us. The applicant will then come forward and share additional details that they might want to bring to our attention. After their presentation, we'll have an opportunity to ask them questions and then we'll open up the public hearing. So for each case, we'll have a public hearing today. Members of the public are invited to come forward. You can queue up at the podium here. And we do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less to respect everyone's time. So we will have a timer on the front of the dais here so you can see how much time you have left. And I will ask you to wrap up your comments in three minutes or less. After the public hearing, the applicant will have a chance to come back up and share or respond to any of the things that were raised in the public hearing. We'll have a chance for any final questions before we discuss as a commission deliberate and make a decision. And then we'll move on to our next case. We are on, I assume we're live on Facebook, so if you step out and you want to tune in, you can do that through the City of Grand Rapids Facebook page. Before we get started on our first case, any conflicts of interest today, commissioners?
I brought this up to staff before the meeting and I don't think it's a conflict of interest, but because the question came up, I will bring it up here. On behalf of his employer, my significant other signed a letter of support for the Burton case. His employer is not connected to the case financially or otherwise. His work will not be impacted by the outcome of this case, but I am bringing it up.
Commissioners, any thoughts on that?
I think because there's no financial connection between the letter of support and Commissioner Joseph, I would move that Commissioner Joseph does not have a conflict of interest.
I would support that.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then let's get started with our first case. It's 670 Burton Street Southeast and 2080 Union Ave Southeast.
This first case actually consists of two cases. And one is an amendment to an existing planned redevelopment. The other is a new planned redevelopment district. Both of them are considered rezonings. And a planned redevelopment district allows the planning commission and the city commission, which will make the final decision on these matters. It allows some flexibility relative to design and allows modifications to some zone district, to the zone district standards to allow creativity and sensitivity in project design. So the requests under consideration are intended to facilitate the construction of a new four-story office building, classrooms, and a 95 space parking lot for use by Bethany Christian Services. And 42 residential site condominium lots for the Dwelling Place Regional Community Land Trust. So that's what the ultimate goals of these requests are. The zoning approval process will consist of the amendment to the boundary of an existing PRD and a new PRD. The property under consideration is a block that is almost 17 acres in area. It's south of Burton and bounded by Union, Winchell, and Martin. The property originally housed a seminary and the local Catholic diocese offices and was subsequently used as a charter school and a retreat center for Lighthouse Full Life Center Church. Now, in February of 2018, Planned Redevelopment District was allowed to, was approved to allow Samaritas to reuse the former St. Joseph's Seminary property at 600 Burton for about 58 affordable independent living housing units for seniors and persons with disabilities and to use the former gym building for adoption, foster care, home-based counseling, refugee services, and home healthcare offices. So that PRD, Planned Redevelopment District, was, is what is shown here in green. And the approvals associated with that are shown on the underlying aerial. So it was subsequently divided into two parcels, but this building and parking lot is still associated with the, 2080 Union is still associated with 600 Burton through an agreement. And then in July of 2018, the Board of Zoning Appeals granted a use variance to Bethany Christian Services to use the remainder of the site, which is shown here in purple, as a transitional shelter. And services included a residential assessment center for unaccompanied children, day service for children, for children in the transitional foster care program, and offices for case management. So as part of this development, those, both the Samaritas uses, or as part of today's request, both those uses that I've described, Samaritas and Bethany, will continue. The Samaritas property, there's really no material changes at all. It will continue to operate as it was approved. And really, we're just, for the Samaritas portion, we're really just looking at a boundary adjustment. So this is what is proposed for one of, for the PRD amendment under consideration today. So this, in green is what the Samar, I'll call it the Samaritas PRD looks like. And in green here on this slide is what the Samaritas PRD is proposed to look like. There, again, there are no material changes and we're really not going to be talking about that today. It does need approval or recommendation by the planning commission and approval by the city commission because of that boundary change, but otherwise it will remain the same. More material is what is going to be happening in what is blue on this slide. Bethany Christian Services is proposing a four-story office building, a new parking lot, and a new maintenance building. So what you see, it's sort of outlined in green here, this is what's going to be attached to the Bethany property. The remainder is a 42-unit site condominium development proposed by Dwelling Place Community Land Trust. And we'll get into the details on that in just a moment. So we'll first talk about Bethany, the Bethany Project. The Bethany Project is this gray parking lot shown on this slide, this new connector building, and this maintenance building. There are also some recreational fields proposed along the east side of the site. Okay, so this slide shows what Bethany is, pardon me, Bethany is proposing. The proposed building is hatched and it's intended to connect two existing buildings on the site. The building will be, that is proposed, is a four-story 9,100 square foot building. Three, the three upper levels will be used for office and the ground level will be used for meetings with clients and for programming such as English language classes and job training. At the northeast corner of the site, a 1,300 square foot storage and maintenance building is proposed. And on, it's, in the middle of the site here, of the overall block, is a new 95 space parking lot. And this is where a lot line adjustment is proposed. So I'll first start out with site layout and building placement. And although this project is being considered as a planned redevelopment to allow design flexibility, because of the institutional nature of the use and the building design, it is recommended that both the PRD standards as well as the TN LDR standards, which is the current zoning and the surrounding zoning, be used to, in consideration of this project. The proposed building is to be sited about 370 feet away from the nearest residential building and would be 103, 103 feet from the nearest Dwelling Place Residential Home in the proposed development. Setbacks, the, you know, by any measure, by either the PRD or the LDR requirements, this proposed building meets those requirements, exceeds them. The proposed maintenance building also does meet the setbacks. The, the minimum setback for, in planned redevelopment districts as well as for main buildings in a, in the TN LDR zone district is, is 20 feet for institutional uses or non-residential buildings. So it does meet those requirements. Some, one of the other site elements that you might want to consider, however, is green space and tree canopy. It does, actually, green space on this site is proposed at 48 percent, which exceeds the, both the PRD and the LDR requirements greatly. But the tree canopy that's being proposed is about 16 percent. The TN LDR for, would, would require 37 percent for non-residential uses and 12 percent in the planned redevelopment district. So we'll want, you know, as we go forward, we'll, I'll show you the tree canopy, or the, the tree survey, and we can talk more about that. Relative to parking, the total required parking for the uses on this site is 184 spaces. And the existing parking lot on the site will be resurfaced and reduced to 61 spaces. This new 95 space parking lot is proposed south of the new building. And that will bring the total parking to 156. So parking is, the proposed parking is deficient by 28 spaces. As you can see on this plan, there, it's sort of in lighter gray here, 28 parking spaces are shown. And the applicant is requesting that construction of those parking spaces be deferred. And that is something that the planning commission does have the authority to do. If it has, if it is determined that they do need that parking in the future by city staff, or if the applicant wants to add that additional parking because they find that they actually do need it, then it can be constructed. So they're not actually asking for a park, a formal parking waiver, but they're asking that the 28 spaces be deferred in case they are needed. This slide is shown, this, this slide shows all the trees on the site and they're color-coded by, by condition. The, you know, the red shows, you know, poor condition, the black is dead, the purple is invasive species, yellow is fair, and those are most of the trees on the site. And then the green is good. And it looks like there are not that many trees that are, that were found in the tree survey to be in good condition. The tree survey documented 355 trees on that entire site. So that includes that dwelling place part as well. Overall, 41 percent of the trees on both sites will be preserved with the remainder removed for development or being found to be in poor condition, dead, or invasive. 154 new trees are proposed to be planted on both of those sites, and I'll show you on the, on the planting plan. Let's see here. This is the tree removal plan. And this is the planting plan exhibit. And relative to the Bethany site, as you can see, there is tree massing that is still proposed to remain along Martin Avenue there, as well as some new trees proposed around the new maintenance building at the northeast corner of the site. No street trees are proposed along this portion of, of Martin. And I, I trust that's because of the significant tree massing that is proposed to remain along the perimeter there. One other element that I'd like to mention about landscaping relative to the Bethany site is the screening that is proposed between the Bethany parking lots and the proposed dwelling place, single-family homes. It is proposed that, an evergreen buffer is proposed in these areas that I was pointing out. Now, and they'll also, they're also intended to be on a low berm of a couple feet in height. The zoning ordinance does have specific landscaping or tree material requirements within those required landscape buffers between parking lots and residential uses. And I would encourage the planning commission to consider the best approach here. I did include in draft conditions of approval that the project meet the zoning ordinance buffer requirements, which include a combination of deciduous and evergreen plant material rather than the evergreen material proposed here. But I think as we hear more, as your discussion and the presentation from the applicant in the public hearing, I think that will inform what your thoughts are on that. One thing that I neglected to mention is, well, actually, I'll mention it later. So, so lastly, on this portion is building elements and definitely not least of the importance here. This is a four-story office building that's being proposed. And the height of the building is just over 54 feet in height. So it really is, I would encourage the planning commission to consider the appropriateness of this building relative to the existing built environment on this site as well as the surrounding development. The planning, or the PRDs do allow the planning commission to increase the height, you know, above what would be allowed in the underlying zone district, which is three stories and 45 feet. So I think I would encourage the planning commission to discuss this element of the design. The materials being proposed for this building are high-quality materials. There is lots of transparency on this building. I think the key is whether you find this to be appropriate in this, in this location. And the last thing I'd like to mention on the Bethany part of the development is transitional features. Whether you find that the, the building setback and any other transitions between this building and the surrounding existing uses and proposed uses are appropriate. I do have a couple more slides of the building elevation as well as the maintenance building. And I think if you have questions, specific questions about that building, I think the applicant applicant would be better equipped to answer those questions. I'd like to now move on to the, the Dwelling Place Community Land Trust portion of the project. That's what's shown in green at the south part and east part of the site. The development site is about 5.7 acres. Forty-two site condominium lots are proposed. Each is to be improved with a single-family home of approximately 1,100 square feet. So what is a site condominium? So a site condominium is a form of lot division. It is not a way to get around any kind of zoning regulations or plating regulations. It's another way to create lots. And it's allowed by the state of Michigan, and thus our zoning ordinance. And because the state's plating process for new subdivisions is relatively cumbersome, we generally see a lot more of the site condominium type of developments rather than the plating that most of us have, you know, where, you know, our lots were on platted lots, or our properties are platted lots. But nowadays, we do see a lot of lot divisions through the site condominium process. And visually and operationally, they really do act like any other subdivision. I might add, it would be a subdivision with a homeowners association, because there are bylaws that, that the properties would be subject to. The applicant is proposing single-story and two-story homes. In addition to the homes, two new public streets are being proposed. These are the gray, the gray streets that you see here. These will be public streets. They will be dedicated to the city, and they can be used by anyone, because they will be public. The portion of the site that I'm pointing to here, just south of the Samaritas Development, is today, part of the Samaritas Development. This is ingress and egress to their parking lot. This is the, the drive of their parking lot. It's proposed that, that drive become part of that public street, and they'll be taking ingress and egress to the parking lot from that new public street. So as in this graphic in the green, the new public streets are proposed. Let's see here. I'll go back here. So, as you can see, that this is a relatively, you know, non-traditional site layout. This doesn't follow the, the grid that we generally have in, in this part of town. These are, you know, they're connecting existing streets. We are, the development proposes 11 homes to face Martin Avenue. These are the homes that are numbered 32 to 42. And the homes are intended to be oriented toward Martin. The backs of their buildings will be on that new public street with parking pads available on the, you know, right off the new public street. The remainder of the homes in the development are internally oriented. There, for instance, lots 12 through 18 will face a, a common courtyard and sidewalk, and as will lots 19 to 31. So those, those homes will face inward. All the homes will have parking and access from the new public streets. And then we have lots 1 through 6, which are oriented toward some green space. The homes are to be sold to low- and moderate-income buyers in a community land trust model. I have received preliminary documentation, which was included in your packet, and I think the applicant is prepared to talk more about what that community land trust is. Okay. So although this PRD, this, this project is being considered as a PRD to allow, you know, flexibility in design, because, I'm sorry, although it's being processed through, the zoning process is a planned redevelopment district, it is recommended that the Planning Commission consider the proposal in context of the TN LDR Zone District standards, due to the fact that these are proposed to be single-family homes, and it's in the context of the surrounding single-family homes. So I think that's a really good way to, to think about it. Things can be different, but you'll want to think about how, how this relates to that surrounding neighborhood. The, the plans show designated building envelopes for each lot, including the location of accessory structures. The proposed lots range in area from about 4,000 square feet in area to about 6,300 square feet in area, and are anywhere, generally between 34, 36, and 42 feet in width. There's some that, that differ depending on the location. Generally, those along Winchell, but those are the, the standard lot widths. Similar to properties in the surrounding traditional neighborhood districts, each lot will have a required building line, or a build-to line. So as shown in this exhibit, each lot, each home will need to be built at the front lot line. I'll go back to this exhibit here, and you can see these dotted lines. So depending on where the, you know, the way the building will be oriented, which is, you know, the, the street's going to be in the back, so the, the required building line will be at, you know, different parts of the lot, depending on where they are. But we'll, we'll have a consistent setback of all the homes in each row. Lots along Martin, you know, these are the ones that are externally oriented rather than internally oriented, and they'll have their required building line as shown on this slide, and the homes will face Martin. Four lots do have their, do have frontage on Winchell. Those are kind of the sides, you know, the, the homes, you'll, you'll see the sides of the homes rather than having the buildings oriented toward Winchell. So those lots are to be set back a bit, or those homes are to be set back a bit further from Winchell, except for Lot 6. Lot 6 is proposed to have a setback of four feet from the lot line, and the lots, now I have required building lot, 18, 19. And the remainder of the lots, 18, 19, and 42, will be set back approximately 38 feet from the back of curb. In the staff report, I did include some analysis of setbacks of the surrounding properties. I don't know if you were able to make sense of that, but if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer. Relative to density, there is a minimum of 3,800 square feet per lot in the TN LDR Zone District. And that's really for new developments in areas that are not established. We do, when we are looking at new, if we're looking at lot splits, we do take into account the area and width of properties in the vicinity. So generally, we see most lots are, are larger than 3,800 square feet. We did do an analysis of the density of the proposed development, as well as the surrounding properties. And I did this analysis excluding any of the right-of-way, just to make sure that we were looking, comparing apples to apples. For the community land trust proposal, it's 8.9 dwelling units per acre, and that compares, so that's a little bit higher than what we see on the surrounding blocks. On Winchell, on the lots just across the street, 6.6 dwelling units per acre. Union, just those lots across the street, 7.3, and Martin, 8.2. I really just looked at the lots immediately adjacent to this development. The applicant also did a similar calculation. They included a little more properties than I did. Our numbers differ slightly, but they're generally the same. As I mentioned before, each lot will have two parking spaces on a parking pad, and two parking spaces is the requirement for a, a single-family home. So the parking requirement is met. Now, no accessory structures are being, accessory structures meaning a shed or a garage, no accessory structures are being proposed to be constructed as part of this development. However, the, as, as part of this community land trust program, if the property owner wishes to build a garage on the area that is designated for an accessory structure, they may do so. However, garages are not being proposed to be constructed necessarily at the time of construction of the homes. We have heard of, the, we've heard in lot, in some of the neighborhood input, concerns about storage on these properties. And we have seen in similar developments where no, no storage is being provided, that there can be issues. Staff is recommending the construction of either a garage or a shed of at least 80 square feet, you know, eight by 10. You know, I think, you know, it could be larger, it could be slightly smaller, but we're recommending that at least a shed be constructed at the time each building is constructed. And so that will give residents a place to store their lawn and garden equipment, and bikes, and things like that. I'll go over to tree canopy. As you can see in this exhibit, street trees are being proposed along Martin, as well as along Winchell. Large canopy trees along Martin. Small columnar street trees are being proposed on Winchell because of the overhead lines. Large canopy trees are also proposed along the proposed, along the proposed new streets. Our, the city arborist has taken a look at this, and he finds it to be generally acceptable, although no tree species is being, has been provided at this time. So a complete analysis can't, cannot be done. The applicant does indicate that a significant number of the trees proposed be native species. Relative to green space, overall, green space is being calculated at 60%. As each lot develops, green space of at least 40% will be required on each lot, and that's consistent with the TN LDR regulations. Relative to building elements, the TN LDR Zone District has requirements for height materials, building orientation, we want buildings to be facing a street, entrance elements, and transparency. And it is proposed, in this little table, which is difficult to read right now, it, it is proposed that this development generally meet those requirements with a few exceptions. Some conceptual elevations have been proposed, but these are really, these are very, very conceptual. I understand that the applicant has engaged an architect, just recently engaged an architect, to prepare designs for this development. And I understand there will be some neighborhood outreach relative to that, which I'll have the applicant talk about. So because we really don't have a good sense of what's being proposed, it's recommended that, at the very least, final site plan review be conducted by the Planning Commission for the building elevations. Not as each lot development, develops, but so we can see what kind of building designs are being proposed, and, and that both the neighborhood, as well as the Planning Commission, would have more comfort in knowing what is to be expected. So I think that concludes what I have to say about the Dwelling Place project, and I, I have just a couple of additional things to mention. This, you know, both development, parts of the development were done with the input of city staff, so, and, and those conversations are ongoing. The proposed new infrastructure, like I mentioned, the new streets, any new storm sewer, lighting, all of those kinds of utilities that will be, that are generally public, will be public in the Dwelling Place portion of the development, and they will be dedicated to the to the city. There is a separate process by which these dedications happen. They don't actually happen through the Planning Commission, but if this site plan is found to be appropriate by the Planning Commission and then the City Commission, then it would go through the process by which all the infrastructure would be designed to city standards and dedicated to the city. Relative to those streets, they are, as you probably have noticed, a little bit, they're smaller than a typical street. The right-of-way is, the right-of-way from, you know, lot line to lot line, the whole public area is proposed to be 36 feet wide with about 20-foot wide pavement. Typical residential right-of-ways are 66 feet with pavement about 30 feet in width. So although this is significantly narrower than a typical city street, city staff has reviewed this against our vital streets plan, which directs all of our infrastructure decisions for mobility. And it has been found that it does meet the criteria. So the Planning Commission does have the ability, and then the City Commission, does have the ability to approve this design. The proposed utility configuration is generally adequate. There is one area, the drive that currently goes into the Samaritas parking lot that will be dedicated as a public street. There's some private stormwater utilities there, and the applicant is working with city staff to come to a resolution. It could be that an easement needs to be, you know, some kind of easement might need to be there, or some kind of encroachment agreement. That remains to be seen, but the engineering department, or all of our city engineers are confident that it's something that can be resolved. Relative to traffic, Mobile GR, the city's parking and transportation department, did request that the applicant have a traffic impact study prepared to quantify any potential impacts the project may have on the adjacent roadway network. So it was generally concluded that the existing street system in the vicinity of the site can accommodate the relatively low amount of traffic generated by the two proposed uses, and that there are no operational or physical improvements needed to accommodate the expected future 2025 traffic volume. So I am not an expert on traffic studies. I know some people are, but we do have our traffic engineer here to answer any questions that you might have. Relative to neighborhood outreach, the applicant did have a number of meetings and did have a number of outreach opportunities. I'll defer to the applicant to talk about that in detail. So in sum, we're looking at an amendment to an existing planned redevelopment district and the establishment of a new planned redevelopment district. The new planned redevelopment district will include a four-story, 9,000-square-foot office building as well as a 42-unit site condominium development. That includes two new public streets. I did, in your staff report, I did include a number of considerations, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from the commission.
All right, thanks, Elizabeth. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you. I'll invite the applicant up if there's additional details you want to share with us.
Okay, all right. You can use this, or this, or this. Good afternoon, Planning Commission. So Elizabeth covered what the general request is for both sites today. I'm going to present as well as Dan Bodie from TAG on behalf of Bethany Christian Services, and Jeremy Daru is also going to talk on behalf of Dwelling Place and the Community Land Trust model. As Elizabeth mentioned, we have a current PRD, and we're looking to amend the existing PRD and approve a new PRD that includes the Bethany Christian Services site and that for Dwelling Place, which is in the blue. This is how the properties break out, just as a refresher. Samaritas property is not changing at all. They were very concerned about their tax credits and the arrangement that they had with their funders. So while there were some suggestions early on about making changes to the site and accommodating it in different ways, it's really not possible, given their arrangement and what they have for their agreements in place for the development of their site when the PRD was originally approved. Bethany Christian Services is in the north, and Elizabeth covered that quite a bit, and Dan will talk a little bit more about that, particularly with the addition, and then the Dwelling Place site. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan first to talk about the Bethany proposal.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Dan Bodie. TAG means the Architectural Group, that's our acronym, so I apologize if that's not clear to you. I'm here in front of you today because Bethany is exploring the opportunity to expand and to bring staff onto this site, which is part of the Garfield neighborhood. They're looking to expand their Burton campus. The project wouldn't allow Bethany to consolidate multiple locations that they have in Grand Rapids, and also provide a more efficient workplace for the Bethany staff, and also streamline some of the services for the clients that are being served in this community. As you've already presented in front of you, a lot of information. I'm going to highlight some of the things that I think are pertinent, and I'm going to allow you a chance to answer, ask some questions. I'm not going to go perbatim everything that's in your package, in the event to be short. Again, we're looking to put a new office building on this site. The office building intent is to have a ground floor, mainly meeting space, program space for our people in service. The upper levels, three levels, are being used to move some facilities around to allow for all of our staff to be in one location. So that's why it's three stories on top of the lower story. In order to do this connector building, we needed to go to the adjacent landowner, which is Pinnacle, and get additional parking. That's why there's a 95 parking spot calculation in our formula. The last piece of this is we're looking to enhance the playground area to the east of the current facility, which is the parking lot there. The current greenbelt area has a detention area, where right now the kids play soccer and they drop into that zone and they kick the cars, the balls out in the car and the parking lots. We also found that to provide a small half-court basketball court has been a very big benefit on other facilities. So that's being proposed as part of that expanded play area. So let me just take you quickly, we talked, it was mentioned the distance between the Bethany proposed connector building and Burton to the north, 370 feet. The same is, the same distance is what you see to Martin, existing facilities or existing houses. Union, it's even further. We're bordered by the Samaritas big building, which is to the west, and we're about 610 from the houses across the street on Winchell. What's being proposed is the 800, or the 9,500 square foot footprint. The reason why that building became important to Bethany is there's two existing buildings on the site. You've been told 670, that's the building that faces Burton. That houses some of the assessment programs on a lower level. And then the upper level are some of the kids' residential programs. There's also another building back there, which is called 660. It used to be part of the Catholic Church, used to be a rectory. It had a chapel in it. It was built in, I think, 1958. It was an old brick and stone building. It's a two-story building. So what Bethany is trying to do is connect these two buildings to create inner-office connection piece, and then also some therapy service on site in that 660 building. So there's a purpose for this building placement. The other thing is, because as we started to research the requirements that the city has for greenbelt, we couldn't build the new office building in the green space to the east. So we've kind of kept the footprint to the building very compact. And you see that it's between these two buildings. So again, the intent there is to keep something very simple, but to connect the two buildings. So here's a snapshot of the buildings that are being proposed. They show up in our exterior renderings, but to give you a little snapshot, to the right on this is the 670 building. The initial building up along Burton is a one-story. Then it has a three-story that was built like a dormitory, so it's tight floor-to floors. That's the 670 building. And then what we are proposing is a new four-story. It's mainly brick. It has some stone-on-the-top element. It also has a stone tower, which is the elevator stair tower. And then there's some glass to meet the transparency requirement, which is why we call it the connector. That's the hub of this campus. This view, by the way, is looking across the street on Martin, as if you were sitting on, I'm assuming, one of these people's front porch in Martin, just to give you an idea of the distance and view. This is a good little snapshot. It's, it's not a real, it's a computer-generated, but again, what you're seeing is an elevated view from the south and the east. The building on the right is that 670 connector building, or the 670 Burton building, which has a one-story up against Burton. And then the next section that you see there is, what I have illustrated, is the three-story 670 building, the proposed connector building. And then behind that is the existing 660 building. So you've got a three, a four, and a two-story. Behind that is the existing Samaritas Independent Living, which is in the range of 64-foot on the main building, and it also has a stair tower, like we have to put in Meet Coat. That's in the 73-foot range, to give you an idea of some of the building elements and height. The other building you see behind this is the old gym building that the Catholic Diocese had. It was a five-court basketball arena. It is now part of the Samaritas office piece. And I'm going to show you a couple of renderings showing from other views. The, again, the building is brick, stone, glass. It's got a flat roof similar to the 670 building that's currently to the right, and the existing 660 building that's stone and brick. Here's a view again across Martin with a little bit of the enhanced landscaping that we hope to do. This is a view across Burton, across, looking at the Samaritas Independent Living is the gabled building on the right. The building on the left is the 670 building, and the new proposed Bethany Connector Building is in the middle, behind a shorter 660 building. This building is across the boulevard on Union. The forefront, the building on the left, is the gym space, which is now being used for Samaritas' office for similar functions. You can see, again, the Bethany building in the center, which is being proposed. We started to hint at, on the right, the Dwelling Place, single-story to two-story apartments or houses. The other element, the last piece in our puzzle, is this storage building slash maintenance building. We purposely put it up along the Burton edge because we get some donations, we need to be able to bring them into that building. But we also, the kids in play come directly out of that building that is to the west. So we're creating more of a parking denotation for pedestrian traffic, and then that's, we're showing that half-court basketball. Again, this building will be heavily screened from Burton. And that's the snapshot of what Bethany is proposing. Would you like to answer questions now regarding Bethany? Would you like us to head to Dwelling Place as your next part?
Let's take, let's take them individually, real quick. Any questions on the Bethany office building that's being proposed? All right, glad we took them individually.
Thank you.
Dana's team did a nice job of nestling the building and the rest of the campus. I think one thing to note with the parking lot deferral that Elizabeth referred to is that was based off of public input that was received. There was concern about the number of parking spaces and the amount of pavement on the site. So Bethany and TAG went back and looked at the parking and decided to request a deferral for those 28 parking spaces in response to the input that they received in wanting to reduce the amount of pavement. So they're hoping they don't need that, but they did want to make sure that you could keep that in mind. For Dwelling Place, I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy to talk about the land trust.
Hello, everybody. Jeremy Daru, CEO of Dwelling Place. And I just want to thank you again. I know that we were here a couple of months ago and talked about this project, so thank you for taking the time to listen again today and consider the proposal here. We recognize that a lot of the feedback that we have received and that has been included in your package is around the Community Land Trust specifically, and so we wanted to take some time today to talk about why Dwelling Place is doing this project and why we're doing it in the form of a land trust. So again, it is probably not a surprise to any of you that over the last decade or so, there's been a significant increase in property values in Grand Rapids, a significant increase in demand for housing, and that as more and more people are looking to move into the city, the, their supply of housing has not kept up with that demand, which has resulted in, in a larger gap and a larger, larger number of people who are looking to find homes and cannot find them. And at Dwelling Place, we work with families that are, right, from living on the streets and moving into this homeownership program. So we, we see how this whole housing system has really been challenged by what, right, the rising property values are a benefit for some individuals, but for many of the people that we're working with, the increase in real estate market has really been hampering their ability to do that.
Jeremy, I appreciate what I assume you might be talking about, the land trust model. And I think for our purposes, we shouldn't consider that necessarily as the financial mechanism in the land use decision we're making today. Happy to have you talk about the need for housing and things like that, but maybe we don't need to cover all of the details of the financing mechanism.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so thank you for that. I will, again, this is stuff on the land trust of just kind of how these have started to become a more common thing around the country and how they're being proposed as a strategy to ensure, again, the perpetual availability of affordable homeownership opportunities in communities. So I am going to kind of skip to this, and I'll talk a little bit about Dwelling Place again. We have been in the business of ensuring that we have an infrastructure of affordable housing in communities where low-income families have a chance to live in communities. We have been doing this for 40 years in Grand Rapids, almost exclusively, well, exclusively up to this point, in the rental arena. And so with the added strain to our housing system right now, and the added strain that we are seeing families that are, have historically been able to live with us for a while in our affordable rental housing and move into rental markets or move into homeownership, it's just harder and harder for those families to kind of be successfully housed as they exit our program, which has, that combined with our interest in seeing inclusive developments across the city, has led us to take on homeownership as a, as an organization here. And so, again, with, with our desire to both see permanent inclusiveness in neighborhoods and ensure that all families have a chance to live in our, in our communities, that has kind of led us to the land trust as the model that we are doing and proposing for the site. So again, and for the sake of the conversation here, I'll move beyond kind of some of these, these questions here. There was a fair amount of questions about how the sales of these work. And I guess just if I can take a couple of seconds just to say, the bottom line of this is when a person has bought a land trust, does it sell the land trust? is when a person has bought a land trust or says sell the land trust, it is not that there's a role where Dwelling Place is playing and kind of taking on some of that equity that comes in. It's just they agree to sell it for a lower price to the next person that's buying it, which kind of allows these things to stay affordable in perpetuity, which is, again, the real advantage of the land trust model is that once homes are built in a neighborhood, that neighborhood has means of staying and always being a place where low-income families can move into, and it kind of saves that over time. So again, if you don't want to spend much time talking today about the CLT.
Yeah, I think it's really interesting. I just, it shouldn't be used in our, the work that you put into it. And I do recognize that there were a lot of questions raised in communication with the Planning Commission, and I'm sure with your group from the public concerned about this, relevant maybe for them, but not for us in the decision-making process.
Yeah. Then I'm going to turn it over to Suzanne to talk about the specifics. I will talk a little bit of just, one of the things, and again, the architectural aspect of the project has not been fully developed yet. We did hear from the community that there is a desire to have traditional kind of architectural styles that are reflective of what's already in the community. This is a very diverse neighborhood from a housing stock perspective, having been built in, you know, the 20s, the 30s, the 40s, 50s, and some into the 60s. So there's a range of architectural elements that are there. It is our intention to kind of incorporate and pull from some of those things. We will be working with Kim Distickter, who was selected partly because of his strong background and track record in being able to do exactly that type of housing development. And so we will continue to work through that. We do anticipate getting a few concepts on paper and going to the community to be able to have these conversations around what those can look like. Also want to just say that the recommendation, we will, we are looking, we have been reluctant to include garages on every site as a requirement for the building. We recognize that, right, that adds cost to it. That is a cost that, when it translates into the final monthly payment for a buyer on their mortgage end, is somewhere between $30 and $50 a month, and it adds to the cost of the building, that we recognize for many families who have the means to do that, adding an extra dollar a day will be a choice they will gladly take, and we'll make sure that they're able to have that option. But for some families, that's enough that it makes the home no longer affordable to them. And so we want that flexibility. It has been recommended, and we heard from community, that there is a desire to see some sort of outdoor storage space available, even if they're not getting a garage. And so the idea of having a storage shed is something that we would be supportive of and would have no objection to include in an approval. Turn it over to Suzanne.
And I can say that, so Kim Distickter, you may recall too, as the architect, he designed Newberry Place, just so for some of the planning commissioners who don't know. So Kim is very sensitive to what happens in context and what's around him. For the Dwelling Place designs, there were several goals and principles that we had in the design of the site to look at, how do we both take the community land trust model and replicate it and scale it across the state? This is going to be the largest CLT project in the state of Michigan to date. And to really try to figure out an affordability model so that current individuals who aren't homeowners can become homeowners, and that we are providing a variety of housing options, but in context with the urban fabric and neighborhood, and also looking at how we use infrastructure. That relationship of putting in infrastructure and the cost of infrastructure for new streets and water and sewer is expensive. And so how do you use the land most efficiently so we're able to provide housing stock at a reasonable price and really optimize the infrastructure as much as possible? And then also thinking about how do we preserve green space in those edges that we've heard from neighbors as we go forward, and that delicate balance of development and green space and what neighbors are used to. So the proposed project is a little bit different than what some people had seen before, and I'll show you some examples of how we'd gone through several different iterations. The basic design and concept came from the idea of doing cottage courts, which has been cited in a number of different publications about really efficient way to use infrastructure, but then also provide green space and intimate spaces for residents to really build community. And a couple of the important considerations were making sure that homes faced Martin and aligned with the homes across the street, so that we're framing Martin, that we're thinking about how we're providing green space for every home. There was discussions at one point about doing attached homes. When we got into the financing of the project and looking at the different options, really the best option to make sure that the project is successful is single-family homes rather than attached, which became, which is something that we had to wrap our minds around. But we also looked at, the number of units originally were proposed at 47, and there's been a 10% reduction in the number of units to 42, based on the input that we received from the community and working through the designs of the lots. The garages have already been mentioned by Jeremy, that those would be built by homeowners, but sheds can be provided, and that we're working through that green space. So I want to just take you through some of those concepts. One of the most challenging edges that we had was on Winchell, and thinking about how we optimize the alleys. It's really more, they feel more like alleys, similar to what you see at Fairmont Square. Fairmont Square are public streets, and they use that, and they narrowed it and worked with city staff to do that. We use that same concept in this design. Winchell is a challenge, as we're trying to work through that infrastructure. And so the edges, the idea on those edges and where those lot lines are set, is that we're trying to provide that additional buffer, but that, as you can see in the conceptual design, is that the homes would serve both streets, so, well, both edges, I'm sorry. The green space in the cottage court as well on Winchell, so it would wrap around the corner and not really be treated as a side, per se, but you're still addressing Winchell. So that was something that was important in our concepts. We've talked about Kim's Distickter and the architectural drawings. I believe it is a recommendation in your resolution, should you choose to decide to recommend the project, about architectural renderings and coming back for plan review. Elizabeth referenced that this is similar to a subdivision or any other residential development. These are single-family homes proposed on individual lots. We're totally agreeable to meeting the traditional neighborhood standards and would suggest that maybe we don't need to come back to Planning Commission, or we request that we don't come back to Planning Commission for architectural review of the residential homes. When we talk about the project in context to the master plan, there's a number of different goals that have been continually supported, both in, not just the 2002 master plan, but repeatedly in neighborhood, neighborhood area-specific plans throughout the city, as well as in the great housing strategies work that was done under Mayor Hartwell and Housing Now work that was done under Mayor Bliss, that really continues to reinforce these themes and goals about providing a choice in neighborhood types and neighborhood housing stock, high-quality housing choices, supporting homeownership, variety of different price points, doing infill development and reuse of sites, and also supporting the business districts that surround it. On the future land use map and where this arrow shows, you'll notice the little red dot at the corner of Burton and Eastern. There's a business district there that is less than one block away. There's one row of single-family homes that separates the business district from this entire campus. And when we talk about building great business districts in great neighborhoods, vital business districts in great neighborhoods, having density and employment opportunities in close proximity to that business district to really lift it up has been a core principle for the past two decades. And this really starts to reinforce that. The business district really does need additional investment and additional population in proximity to that would only help. For the future land use map, the medium-low density residential zone, or future land use designation is 5 to 9.9 units per acre. This project fits within the future land use map range and is actually below the 9.9 designation. We did go to the South Town Business Area, South Town Corridor Improvement Authority, and they're asked about their area-specific plan and their goals. You can see on the green star, it's the development site, and you can see the corner of Burton. Burton carries 15,000 cars a day, so it is a very busy corridor. It's also a transit corridor, as is Eastern. They both, especially Eastern, has been identified by the Rapid as a key transit corridor, and in the future, when they're talking about potential routes, you know, that Eastern has been identified as a desirable corridor for future enhancements. So trying to, you know, encourage development without displacement, looking at how we provide for vulnerable members of our community is aligned with the South Town's plans and in their recommendations. For Housing Now, one of the key recommendations for Housing Now was to consider narrow lot widths and smaller lot sizes to be accommodating for more development. And so this project, while it's a little bit more unique and may not match exactly all of the surrounding lot sizes and lot widths, it is generally a proportion to some of those and does fulfill the recommendations from Housing Now and the goals that are being set forward to include more infill development. For community engagement, there's been a lengthy, more outreach than traditional, traditionally you might see for other development projects. Postcards were sent out to residents within the neighborhood. We've met with the Garfield Park Neighborhood Association and the South Town CIA. There was door knocking, there was events held at Garfield Park with a tent event, and we had large yard signs so that residents could be aware of if they did not receive the postcard. And then going back to the neighborhood and having additional discussions, once we, when we first heard the reaction with the 47 units, we went through a iterative design process, came back to the community and proposed three different proposals, which I'll mention, and actually had a survey that people could take and provide their opinion on the designs before going back to Garfield Park Neighborhood Association and doing the final presentation. These are some pictures. This one was an event that was held on-site behind Bethany's current location, so people could be on the property, looking at the site and have discussions with us about that. We had idea boards, and this is the second iteration, we went back out to the community to talk about different design options. The original design had three access points off of Winchell and did not take advantage of the connection off of Union. Proposal A, which is in the upper-right corner, looked at some modifications and included trying to reduce the number of curb cuts off of Winchell in a different way. What that ended up in resulting in is driveways off of Martin. One of the challenges with that was that all of a sudden you went from having continuous sidewalk to all of these driveways breaking up the sidewalk and the walkability of the neighborhood. So that wasn't, you know, it was an option, but it wasn't a great design from that perspective. Option B, preserved more of the green space, one of the things that we heard from the community was trying to open up the site and making it more available to residents. And so that design, currently, the site is, there's a six-inch or six-inch, six-foot chain-link fence that surrounds this property. So discussions about taking down the fence, making it more open and available occurred with the option B. And then option C looked at trying to space things out a little bit more and had some different variations to that. So we also, in the conversations, I mentioned green space, property values were raised as a concern by residents. They wanted to see density and traffic reduced and create community, a community amenity, curb appeal, and sustainable environment. In the survey results, 60% were residents, and option B, the one that had the green space at the corner with the fence removed, was the preferred design. We did receive a lot of other comments related to it, which related to traffic and parking impacts, density, green space, transparency, and engagement process, maintenance, concerns about noise and crime, property values. The question that Jeremy was trying to answer about the CLT was this low perceived benefit to future home buyers, motivations by the developer. So that's why we did put that in the presentation, just to try to address the public concerns. So this was the original design that we had proposed or we were thinking of initially. The one on the right is where we've revised it to work in more green space, less infrastructure, and take advantage of an existing curb cut. So there's no longer three access points along Winchell, but there are two. For traffic, we looked at trips, and Chris Zull is here, who did the traffic impact study, and John Bartlett from the city is also here if there are questions about traffic. The headline here is that overall, at peak in the morning, you're talking about 100 trips. In the evening, 92 during peak hour, if you look at the general daily trips, which are non-peak, that's where the single-family residential comes in. So it's really scattered more throughout the day, where you would see trips than any one large event. And again, this is just off of Burton Street, where there's already 15,000 cars a day. So overall, in the street network, you have a grid here and how it works. Martin currently has speed bumps on it, and Union has a Boulevard design to it. And so John, I'm sure, can talk about if there's additional traffic calming measures that are necessary. But this, the capacity for the street system can easily handle the cars that would be generated by both the Bethany and Dwelling Place projects. The density comparison Elizabeth already alluded to, the existing home average, we took a broader look than just the homes directly across the street and looked at each block, and both including and excluding adjacent right-of-way. For the calculations for our project are at 8.9 units per acre, if you exclude the right-of-way, 6.1 if you include it. The traditional neighborhood low-density residential zone district allows up to 11.4 units per acre, so we are well within both the master plan and the TN LDR and what it allows. Elizabeth covered the tree survey. I think it's important to note where you have the biggest massing of trees up in the right corner for Bethany will be preserved. There'll be some pruning and some modifications, but generally, we're preserving that as well as looking at how we treat that southwest corner and how we think about that in design. And that's it. So do you have any questions for us?
All right, thanks Suzanne. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant group?
I have a question. This is a condominium, is that correct?
Correct.
Does that mean that the condominium association pays dues for all the external maintenance and green space maintenance, or is that the individual homeowner?
So these are each individual residential lots, so each homeowner will be responsible for their own parcel. And then there are some common elements that are present that will have to be shared by the condominium, which will have a small condo association fee with it. One of the primary goals of this, especially because when you look into underwriting and the affordability piece again, and eligibility for homeowners, is to try to keep those condo fees as low as possible. And so there's the reason why there's not lots of big, common spaces, because that would add to that bottom line of the condo association fees, which we did not want to burden future homeowners with.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could also add, that was the reason for the public streets.
Other questions? Okay. Well, we are about an hour and a half into this. Before we start the public hearing, we're going to take a five-minute break, just so that we can give you our full attention. We will return and get started just a couple of minutes after 2:30. We will return and get started just a couple minutes after 2:30. Started here, and I will open the public hearing, so this is your opportunity to come forward and to share your brief thoughts with us. Kristin will be controlling the timer for us. We'll do our best to keep things on track with that. Just in the interest of time, if we're going to hear a lot of comments that are very similar, it's fine to just reference the speaker before you and say that I agree with what they said about this and this. And yeah, I think that's all I've got. Just state your name for the record and keep your comments as brief as possible. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Scolton. I was the board president at GPNA when the planned redevelopment district was originally approved. And we've had a really good experience with Pinnacle Construction, with Bethany Christian Services, and with Dwelling Place on another project on Burton. So they've been really good partners and really good about communicating with the neighborhood. So I think this project, I recognize that a lot that's been, and we told Pinnacle, a lot that's been a field for 100 years is going to be a big change for neighbors. And I think that, you see that, it's a big change for neighbors. But I think, as Suzanne talked about, with regard to Housing Now, with regard to the local business district, with regard to the housing need that's present in our city, it's important that we weigh the inconveniences that the neighbors are going to have to experience with more traffic, maybe more noise, construction, with the very strong need of future neighbors in our neighborhood, of future customers for our local business district. This development fits all the zoning and planning requirements, right? And it's one block from a major transit corridor, a major business district, okay? It's completely real that the neighbors are going to experience some discomfort and some change. And everyone is nervous when a new neighbor moves in. So their concerns are completely valid. But I encourage the Planning Commission to approve this project. These are good partners for our neighborhood, and it's a good project for our future neighbors and for our current neighbors and business owners. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Cheryl Litzma, and I live in the Garfield Park Neighborhood Association. And I am speaking to express my strong opposition to the current proposal and rezoning request for 2080 Union. We are concerned about many of the things that have been spoken about because of traffic and safety issues. The green space will be eliminated. This development really poses a threat to the culture integrity of the Garfield Park and the Alger Heights neighborhood. A mobile home park typically allows for five to nine mobile homes per acre. This project has 42 homes in 5.8 acres, which is little more than seven homes per acre, just like a mobile home park. Additionally, we have been informed that when Pinnacle calculated the housing density for their proposed development, they included the surrounding streets. But when they compared it to the neighborhood, they did not use the surrounding streets. This falsely skews the data in their favor. In adding 42 more houses on a 5.8 parcel to an already developed neighborhood, this will have a severe increase in traffic. We are all in for affordable housing. I think it is needed, but not in the way this has been proposed. I believe this is kind of subsidized housing wrapped up in a different package, and it doesn't look like this is high quality. This project is not offering a great deal on affordable housing in a prime area. They are offering a bad deal on homes in a prime area. It will look more like a trailer park with no basements, no garages, and homes very, very close together. It is a sham. In summary, while this development will give a few more families an opportunity to live in our wonderful neighborhood, it will also deprive these families of developing generational wealth, and it will increase traffic, increase street parking, increase traffic hazards, increase noise, decrease housing values, decrease individual families' investments, decrease healthy competition, decrease desirability, decrease wildlife, decrease green space, decrease cohesiveness of the neighborhood, decrease overall quality of houses found in the neighborhood, decrease city taxes from individual landowners, and ultimately damage the culture and integrity of Michigan's most desired neighborhood. We ask the city to please protect us and our neighborhood, protect the people who would otherwise be duped into this project, protect our investments, protect our homes, protect our culture. We urge you to disapprove of the proposal and rezoning at 2080 Union. Thank you.
Please, I'm going to just say, similar to maybe an eighth grade graduation, let's hold our applause, just so we don't have that interruption in between speakers.
Hi. I wonder if maybe we can make something a little bit more disabled-friendly for the next session. Thanks. Nope. All right. Yeah, okay. So my name's Anton Josephson, and I have submitted a letter to the commission already. I'm going to speak on one specific issue. I also oppose the project. I live two blocks south of the proposed area on Union. And the one area I want to speak to, Jeremy talked about it earlier, Dwelling Place in general has responded to my comments. I did find out about the project through MLive, not through any outreach that anyone did, so I read about it. But the one area I want to speak to is storage. Virtually every house surrounding the project has at least a one-stall garage. Some have a two-stall garage. There's no proposed storage for these areas. I heard mentioned that they would be open to putting in a shed. That's awesome. I'd like to make that a requirement of the commission. I'd actually like to see the footprint look similar to the surrounding houses, though. And I believe the requirement or the zoning does require LDR to look like the surrounding areas. So let's have garages. Because when you think about who these homes are targeted to, low-to-moderate income people, the expectation that they're going to put them in after the unit's sold is ridiculous. It defies logic. In addition, because of the funding structure that this project has in their HOA, the homeowner is only going to be able to receive 25% of the gain in value. So me as a homeowner going in will spend 100% of my capital into putting a storage structure in there. And yet, when I get ready to sell, I'm only going to be able to receive 25% of whatever gain in value that puts. The expectation that they're going to take, people aren't dumb, they're not going to make the investment in storage if it's not already there. And a garage is the most logical requirement. When I asked Dwelling Place about this, it's in the exhibit that I submitted along with my letter, the answer is, well, the city of Grand Rapids will enforce any code violations if they don't take care of their lawn. Or they can leave the equipment outside, in a reference in the engagement session. So what that does is it requires neighbors to report other neighbors to the government. It also increases the law enforcement when things left outside are stolen. So we will have, you know, an increase in law enforcement patrols as well as code enforcement complaints. I would strongly suggest that the commission ask Dwelling Place to come back with new renderings that show the actual homes with their storage, and I would ask them to oppose this until that gets addressed. Thank you.
My name is Hallie Honig, and I live also a few blocks south of the development. And respectfully, I know you talked about Community Land Trust not being part of the decision-making process. However, as you can see from the folks from the Dwelling Place, like struggling, talking about the project without talking about the land trust, it can't be decoupled because it's driving force behind the proposal, and it's driving force behind how these homes are going to be built and implemented and what the current residents and the future residents are going to need to live with. So respectfully, I'm going to use my couple of minutes to ask for you to listen to some perspectives about research that's been used to support this project. I've done my own amount of reading about Community Land Trust and the growing body of research of the impacts of affordable and high-density housing. I know this is like medium to high-density housing. In other cities, CLTs are being used as mechanisms to stave off gentrification and to respond to the barriers that families have in building wealth and finding homes to begin with, and as one possible tool to get out of the cycle of poverty. And while we can all agree that those things are deserving of the highest priority, that's not what this project is looking to solve. So using success stories from those CLT applications is just not honest. Yet such data has been cited anecdotally as evidence supporting the rezoning request, so I ask that you consider the following points. One is about property values. So we're told by the developers that most studies show CLTs and/or medium-to-high-density housing have positive or neutral impact. That is true. However, it is also that those outcomes were realized in communities that were struggling, where property values were depressed. Studies citing this neutral to positive impact on home values looked at situations where affordable housing replaced abandoned buildings or vacant lots, or they renovated, like buildings in shambles, which of course brought stability to the neighborhood as part of a broader community revitalization strategy. And that's just not applicable to this particular situation. The research I want you to think about is that negative impacts do occur when the density is too high, when the design is poor, and when the quality of management and maintenance is low, which Tony before me just spoke about. And so these are all issues that you're going to hear, I'm sure, about from my fellow neighbors. Bottom line, there's just a lot of variables to consider. There's no reason to believe that findings from one neighborhood, particularly the Community Land Trust model, would be applicable, you know, in this situation. Generally, we know that growth and change is needed, but this isn't the right solution for the neighborhood until a more thoughtful plan is put in place that's community-centered. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Granger, and I live on Martin Avenue, right across from the lot that we're talking about here. For the past four months or so, my fellow neighbors and I have engaged with this project and its developers. Whether it's the letters in today's agenda, the signatures on our petition of opposition, or the public comments at the last commission meeting, it's clear that the vast majority of the neighborhood are opposed to this project. It's not a good fit for the lot. It's not a good deal for those who would buy these houses, and it would not build up the surrounding neighborhood. The few who support this project actually support the idea of it. To them, words like "housing crisis" are suitably scary, and words like "affordable housing" are suitably soothing. Who doesn't want to get out of a crisis, and who doesn't want housing to be affordable? But even when we look at the letter from the Neighborhood Association, which did not support or oppose this project, we still find a cautionary tone. It clearly states many concerns and identifies many problems. Excessive density, concerns about house values, increased traffic, loss of green space, we've covered this stuff. Those problems are there, and they're identified, and they're real. It's not about supporting the idea of the project, but as it stands with the details that have been outlined. But then again, why are we even talking about this? In 2017, the whole 12-acre lot was rezoned from no more than 58 dwelling units, and that's already taken up by Samaritas and Bethany Christian. There is already an exceptional number of people on this block, exceptional in those buildings and surrounding the area. Building more than 40 houses with their own lawns, their own driveways, their own streets directly goes against the zoning standard we've already established for this area and the surrounding area. The lot hasn't gotten bigger since then. Nothing has changed. We are still living by those zoning rules in our neighborhood, and if we want another neighborhood in there, it should follow the same rules. Never mind that this project proposes to take more than double the number of households on that block and put them in a quarter of the space, and then double the number of cars that should be expected for them. Never mind that that number of houses was determined by what was financially viable for the project and not what that space actually supports. Never mind that these houses aren't actually affordable to sellers who only get back 25% of whatever they put in that house. Again, the rule Again, the rules for how densely we want to live in Garfield Park and Elder Heights have already been settled, and they led to a neighborhood being accessible, walkable, and diverse. If the developers want to build a neighborhood, it should work by the same rules as the current neighborhood. By putting this many people in such a small space with such an untested financial model doesn't actually seem to help them. If anything, it seems to take advantage of people and take advantage of them in a different way. Again, the vast majority of us neighbors who have looked over this proposal oppose it. Do not allow the financial interests of a handful of developers to outweigh the voices and experiences of all the households who have worked to make this neighborhood what it is.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Weirz, and I live on Winchell. The most common problem our neighbors have with this project is the density. Even neighbors who support the project have suggested bringing down the number of houses to a more manageable number. Regardless of the quality of homes, the financial model used, or concerns, the overwhelming majority of the neighborhood has been clear on every step of the way, this is too many houses. At first, Dwelling Place ambitiously proposed almost 50 houses in a 5.5-acre lot. Even they admitted that was probably too many houses for such a small space. But in order to make the project financially viable, they had to scale things up to that number. They have been clear every time they're asked, "The density has been determined by what makes sense on a balance sheet, not what makes sense in that space." Even if you took the whole parameter of this lot, you would still get less than 50 houses. That means this project would put twice the amount of houses in a quarter of the space. This space and its surrounding neighborhoods has been repeatedly zoned for low-density residency. Votes have already been cast, and this issue has been settled many times before, even as recently as 2018. This is a low-density area, and the current zoning is in part responsible for the diversity of our neighborhood. First-time homeowners, houses that have been raised for generations, two churches that bring a flood of people, and various ethnicities. Make no mistake, we are a welcoming community, but we already support a dense population on this block. In addition to the 50 households surrounding this lot, our neighborhood already accommodates about 50 seniors in the Samaritan facility, and dozens of refugees in the Bethany Christian Service Building. This space in our neighborhood already supports an exceptional degree of diversity. Remember, the developers are coming here asking for an exception to the zoning that has already been voted on and established for this area. The remainder of that lot was zoned for commercial use, which makes an isolated neighborhood of single-family houses a glaring exception. Again, there are already two exceptional residencies that we support in that lot. Why should a few developers who are able to snap their fingers and create a neighborhood that doesn't follow the same rules as the rest of our neighborhood? Why should we support a density that was determined by financial incentives rather than what the neighbors can actually support? Just around the corner from the slot, you'll see a sign for Elder Heights with the motto, "The Small Town in the Big City." The rest of us have invested in this neighborhood with our mortgages and our families. We bought here because we knew the zoning. We knew what a neighborhood looks like. Do not grant these developers another exception, which would jeopardize all the work our whole neighborhood does. Hold them accountable to the same rules that we live by. And I just want you to imagine your own house right now, and I want you to imagine that across the street, they want to build 42 affordable houses, and the new street will go right to your driveway, which is gonna go to our driveway. You just bought this house not knowing this. My husband and I moved in there two months ago. And you're pregnant, or your wife is pregnant, and all you wanted was a quiet neighborhood. How would you feel? Please do not let this go through. Thank you.
Thank you for your time today. My name is Jim Norman, and I live on Union Avenue. I am disappointed that there has never been a consistent proposal brought by Dwelling Place to the neighbors of 2080 Union Avenue as to what, in reality, will be built on this property. Each presentation had different pictures and graphs. At one time, it was stated that the ideal candidate for these houses was low-income. And then somewhere along the line, it became moderate income. And now, it's low to moderate income. The pictures of the proposed houses at one point looked small, uninteresting, and at another presentation, the houses were pictured as large with gables and chimneys. The discrepancy and lack of transparency leaves the neighbors of 2080 Union with an unclear picture of what will actually be put into this neighborhood. If this proposed zoning rule is changed and Dwelling Place is allowed to proceed... Dwelling Place is proposing, without being specific, something that is very different from the surrounding neighborhood. Without sheds or garages, the houses themselves are problematic. And the more deeply you question the proposal, the more obvious it becomes that the developers misunderstand even the most basic elements of home ownership. When the roof needs to be replaced or the water heater blows, will Dwelling Place step in to help with those repairs? Or does each homeowner have to play Russian roulette with the homes they buy and hope that they're not the unlucky homeowner stuck holding the bag for those repairs, which will come off the bottom line when they sell? An unpopular fact that needs to be stated: homeownership isn't always affordable. Buying a house is taking a risk. In fact, many risks: roofs might leak, trees might fall, major replacements might need to be made. The neighbors of 2080 Union have been cooperative in the past when proposals make sense. The Samaritas and Bethany projects made and make sense and fit the neighborhood, and basically were already part of the neighborhood physically and aesthetically. So far, this proposal does not make sense on even the basic levels of house type: financing, equity, and even home-owning responsibilities. My neighborhood deserves the opportunity for this property to be developed, to conform to the character of the surrounding streets with the zoning the rest of the neighborhood is under, even though it might be cumbersome. I ask that you definitely consider how these will not relate to the existing neighborhood as far as the houses go.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Ethan Schaefer. I live at 654 Winchell. By request of the board, my speech is kind of pointless because I'm agreeing with everybody that came before me as far as opposing this project, especially when it comes to the future homeowners only getting 25% back in equity, especially when Dwelling Place currently is asking them to build their own garage. There's no driving force behind that if you only get 25% of that back. I think one of my biggest issues with this project is going to each and every meeting. Everything has been changing. As previously stated, none of the graphs are ever the same, including today, when density was brought up at 8.9. At the last community engagement meeting, it was at 8.3. So I feel like myself and a lot of the rest of the neighbors have been lied to, basically from the word "go." They say they want our input, but yet, on the Wednesday before the Thursday meeting is when they decided to mow across the street and put in these street signs to let everybody know. I don't know about you guys, but some of us have work schedules, and that doesn't always work. And a lot of my neighbors, not myself, but a lot of my neighbors have children, after-school There's a lot that I don't think Bethany took into consideration when they tried to do this, and it just seems very forced. Anytime that we've asked them to go back to the drawing board, especially those of us that live on Winchell, we've asked for the homes to face the road, and they continue to refuse to make any changes like that. They made changes like that on Martin, and they thought that would be enough, but they just don't actually hear us. We've put plenty of time and effort into trying to make it to these meetings and trying to come together as a community to try and find a solution or find some compromise. And I feel personally that I haven't been heard or listened to. With that, just a reminder, I oppose this project and don't think it should go through in its current state. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Swan, and I live on Union. When it comes to whether a project should be done, there are many questions we should ask. Among the most important is, who will be in charge of this project? For the most of us in the neighborhood, we've been asking, "Who's on first?" For the past couple of months, trying to figure out who these developers are and what they plan to do. If the developers have exemplified anything during this time, it has been a lack of transparency. Most of us... I'm a little nervous. I'm not good at public speaking, excuse me. But most of us first heard about the developers at the end of September, and say we didn't get off on the right foot is an understatement. On the afternoon of September 22nd, a handful of us heard knocks on the door and got a flyer handed to us about a housing project meeting the following day. Less than 24 hours at this point. Anyone away at work didn't hear about it. That evening, those of us who happened to be in the Garfield Park and Elder Heights Facebook groups were shocked to see the proposed plans posted not by the developer, but by a concerned and informed neighbor. And we spent the rest of the evening mostly being confused. Those of us without Facebook, again, didn't hear about it. The following morning, the day of the first meeting, vague signs were put up around the block for a community engagement session from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. that day. For those who, one, didn't hear the knock, two, aren't on Facebook, and, three, just got back from work, they missed the first meeting. And many could not make the meeting the next day again because they didn't have sufficient notice to plan for it. To add to insult, the signs had the audacity to say, "Your voice matters." Of those who could attend the first meeting, that first meeting, the majority were not impressed by what they saw. Some developers were aloof and triumphant, using a chipper tone to inform us of a decision they've already made.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments. Your time's expired.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Walter. I live also on Union. And as my fellow neighbor said, you know, when it came to the design of the redesign, we might have been given 48 hours' notice for that meeting. Those of us still open to the project were disappointed to see that the density only lessened from 47 to around 42 houses, but they said the designs were still in progress, so they wanted to move the zoning discussion to December. The developers assured us neighbors they weren't gonna do a presentation at the City Commission meeting. They would just stand up and motion at the conversation and its vote be tabled until December. But that's not what happened. Instead, they went on to give several lengthy presentations with slideshows, abstract overviews of the community, land trusts, and mentions of studies into surveys to which they didn't have the results. There were no representatives from either Garfield Park or Elder Heights neighborhood associations on the agenda. About 12 neighbors were able to give their public comment at the end. Those of us who attended were shocked, but sadly not surprised to see that our trust had been betrayed once again. The day of that first meeting, one of our neighbors called the news about covering the event. The producer said, "Oh, is this about those developers trying to shoehorn a massive project into a small lot behind the neighbor's back?" And I'm sad to say, he seems to have summed it up perfectly from day one. And yet, we still have not seen a final plan. To the developers, we get it. You own the land, and you want to make money on your investment. Just as we took the risk on our houses and land, we hope that our investments pay off. There's no need to cloak your dealings in altruisms or euphemisms. But if you want to be entrusted with creating a neighborhood, you should first try to be a good neighbor and reach out to the people who already live there instead of going behind their backs. Thank you.
My name is Faith Norman, and I've lived on Union for 28 years. The housing development would not add to our neighborhood, but it would be utterly a change for it, and not for good. This housing development is not only problematic in itself, it's problematic for our neighborhood as a whole. This project would not only add more houses and more residents, in addition to the changes we have for Samaritans and the proposed Dwelling Place houses in Bethany, it would disrupt the character and the rhythms of our neighborhood. This space is not meant for high-density development. High-density residential is not in keeping with the city's decisions about that piece of land, nor the city's decisions for low-density residential throughout the surrounding area. Again, the density of this proposal was not determined by how many households could reasonably live in this space. It was determined by what made financial sense for the developers. And when it comes to the rest of the block, this project puts twice as many households in a quarter of the space. In order to create their desired number of house fronts, the developers proposed cutting two new city straits into this small fraction of the block. Between the driveways without garages, the two new streets, and the expanded Samaritan parking lot, there is essentially no green space left over from the current lot. Current residents of the neighborhood, seniors at Samaritans, and refugee children at Bethany all currently enjoy that green space and historic tree line, but it would be gone from this project. Instead, future residents would just have two narrow congested streets. Remember, we have twice as many houses in a quarter of the space, and then, we have to account for well over twice as many cars inside that space. And possibly four cars are allowed per house. Where will they go? Overflow into Winchell and Martin? People already have to park there in the existing neighborhood. And on top of that, every Sunday, those streets are full because of the traffic to the two churches on either corner. And what about the city? In addition to building these streets, well, how will the city really be able to maintain them? What about plowing and street sweeping and all the recycle and trash carts? How will that be managed with all those cars? Finally, very important, creating a segregated neighborhood where everyone is perpetually selected by their socioeconomic status, where everyone lives on top of each other and where everyone makes very little equity on their house, does not build up the people in those houses, nor Garfield Park, Elder Heights as a whole. The city and City Commission have repeatedly zoned our neighborhoods for low-density residential. Please maintain the integrity of our neighborhood. We raised our four children there. Children play on the sidewalks and ride their bikes in the neighborhood. This is too many people, too many cars.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Wheeler, and I live on Union, where Winchell deadens into Union, so I'm on that very corner of the property, which is considered the green space, I guess, right now. I hear you talk about green space. Since the developers own the lot, it's obvious that they want to turn it into something profitable for themselves. And just because we propose this space being turned into a densely packed housing, because we don't want it to be turned into a densely packed development, which would be problematic, doesn't mean we don't want it to be turned into anything. We just want the space to be turned into something that's beneficial to everybody: the developers, the people in the lot, and the surrounding neighborhoods, those that surround the whole perimeter of it. Some neighbors were supportive of alternative residential solutions like traditional condos that would make a smaller footprint, you know, putting the units together. Others sought more commercial buildings, possibly like a daycare or a community center. But the overwhelming people wanted to keep it as the green space, as a park. This is actually in keeping with the city's master plan, which has parks and green space as one of its top priorities. In fact, not even a week after the proposal was unveiled to the neighborhood, the mayor was holding his green initiative to plant almost 300 trees right next to Burton Heights. And the present project... And the present, um, project unfortunately proposed cutting down, uh, the majority of trees in our tree line. And the press did a full front page article on that, that I'm sure you guys have noticed. I thought it was kind of a slap in the face almost. In addition to the parks, the city's major plan also prioritized special considerations for elderly adults. Unfortunately, Samaritan has that whole senior living area now and, um, it would be beneficial to have more walking paths and benches and green space there. That would also incorporate, um, the trees and bushes and animals. There's actually deer that actually live there right now, um, in the green space. And, um, that, um, even the refugees could play. We're proposing even having the splash pad moved. Garfield Park could, could put it over there. More benches, more tables, um, more interaction between the existing people, the elderly that are there and the community. Doing things that, um, that promote community, even community gardens, anything like that. So, green space is something that was lost and will never come back, so we ask that your decision be made wisely.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jennifer Basner and I live on Winchell. The core purpose of the Community Land Trust model is to revitalize disinvested neighborhoods struggling with issues such as low property values, high crime, derelict buildings, and that are seen as bad investment areas for business owners, while also creating and sustaining affordable housing. Garfield Park is not a struggling, disinvested neighborhood. Building a community land trust in a neighborhood that doesn't struggle with the instability and blight a community land trust is meant to address is a disservice to residents and the city as a whole and is incongruent with the community land trust mission. Additionally, studies on the impact of affordable housing initiatives on the surrounding neighborhoods over a 10-year span affirm that affordable housing programs in more stable neighborhoods drive down home values and decrease racial diversity. While new affordable housing programs in disinvested neighborhoods increase surrounding home values, reduce crime, and attract businesses. The facts show building this project in Garfield Park would have a negative impact here while squandering the opportunity to significantly benefit other neighborhoods of the investment and revitalization they need and deserve. We must address affordable housing in Grand Rapids in ways that are effective and beneficial to all and be careful not to make poor decisions that will squander an opportunity to serve our communities that are in most need. Funding is also a concern. The fragility of this project can be seen in that Dwelling Place has made clear the project is not financially feasible without a minimum of 42 homes in this specific project. And they were originally hoping for 47. Building 42 to 47 houses on less than six acres of land is far more than a location of this size can reasonably support. In which case, it seems this is also logistically not the right or appropriate location for this project. Given these facts, it is reasonable to say Dwelling Place's Community Land Trust needs to be seen in a more realistic light and needs to be built in a location that will maximize the benefits of this project as it is meant to do. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Ron Reynolds, I live on Winchell Street. Many people in our neighborhood couldn't be here today. I've talked to a lot of them personally at door-to-door. I have a question for Elizabeth. I know a lot of people mentioned they sent emails and letters to the commission. Did each person receive a copy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure, okay, thank you. Appreciate you doing that. I did a survey down the street, I went along Winchell, I went along Martin, and I went on Union up to all this green space. People are going to be looking at this project. I've got the survey with me, if you'd like to have it, you can have it. It's individual surveys. And the survey said 95% of the respondents are against the project. Okay, 95%, saying the statement, saying they're against the project. Two people said they were for the project. One of them was married to someone who's against the project. Don't go to that house. Anyway, we're a good starter neighborhood and everybody keeps mentioning the business district that's right around the corner. Have you been there? There's like three things open in that neighborhood down there, business-wise. Everything else is closed up. There's not employment opportunities there. And nobody's jumping the gun to get in there because most of those buildings have been empty for a long time. We have a good appreciation of home values right now. I moved in 38 years ago. My house is worth four and a half times what it was worth when I moved in. And I don't think it'll stay that way. I think it'll go down if this goes, goes ahead. Three people in our block have sold because this project is going, talked about. And the fourth person said that's the reason they are going to be selling. They mentioned low and moderate income families at least three times on their website, but the first question I asked was, "Is this low-income housing?" And I was told by a Dwelling Place member, "No, this is not..." I resent that remark. "This is middle-income housing." I haven't seen anything like that in print on anything. They use a buying model that I wouldn't use and I don't think anybody in this panel would use to buy a home. It's been described already. Winchell and Martin in particular get snowplowed very seldom. So if we have people parking on the street, more people parking the street, it's going to be even tougher to get a snowplow down there. You can't pass each other. Parking, um, when there's a wedding at the church, it's really full. Here's some comments in the survey, and many of these comments were said by more than one person. "Why destroy a nice area and a little green space we have in the city? Most meetings were over before I was notified. It will ruin our neighborhood feel and the character of our houses. We enjoy the beauty of our neighborhood. Subsidized housing is not suitable for this neighborhood. This will reduce property values and green space. We are not contacted by Dwelling Place regarding these meetings. Transparency has been an issue in this proposal. We very much oppose this project. We're concerned about traffic and lack of oversight." We were told, by the way, there was going to be no presentation October meeting, and there was. They lied to us. "You need to know the neighborhood is overwhelmingly against the project and many of those surveys mentioned fighting this in court if it's approved."
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Craig Tomaszewski. I live across the street on Burton from the proposed development. I don't have a real problem with Bethany's proposed four-story building or their maintenance building. I do have some concerns about the density of the housing project. I also am concerned that the stormwater runoff is going to go into the sewer system instead of into the ground as it has, is now. We are taking too much of the green space and paving it over to complete this project. I'm also concerned about the tree removal and the reduced canopy space going below the city standards. So, yeah. I kind of support Bethany and their part of this, but I have to say I'm really mixed on the Dwelling Place part. And I'd like to see a better proposal before they go forward with this.
Good afternoon, my name is William Weld Wallace. I live in Hoyt, one block from the project. Clearly, I am a stutterer, so public speaking is not my most fun way to spend my afternoon. But I speak today in, in support of this project. My, my, my wife and I retired here from Detroit two, two and a half years ago, where, where you lived and worked for 40 years or so. And in, in, in my career in Detroit, I, 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 I worked in a leadership position in a large nonprofit there. And, uh, who did quite a bit of homeless work, part, part of the mission, the project, and included building Lytec developments. So I am familiar with some of the, some of the aspects of development work. I have been on the receiving end of things like when Dwelling Place was taking community comments, I was on the receiving end of some of that as well. I am very aware that many of my neighbors are opposed to this project. We love our neighborhood. We really value the neighbors we have in our neighborhood. The questions they raise are legitimate, particularly those on the number of units and increased traffic. As, as the traffic, that is a, that is a problem for the city. The developers really don't have say in that. Strongly encourage speed bumps, maybe a light at Burton and Union, things like that. But there is concern for families that, that, that live in the area. As the size of the project, I think everybody wishes it could be a little smaller. The, the, the density is a concern, but I also know from being involved in projects myself that the finances are fragile in these things. You have to have a certain size to make it work. Affordable housing is not cheap to build, no matter where you put it. And you have to have a certain size to make it affordable. And I, I respect that Dwelling Place, just, just like my nonprofit in Detroit, did all the diligence in trying to cut costs as much as they can and have a quality project and have, have the right number of units. The other concern I've heard is that of generational wealth, an issue which is a historic problem for communities of color in particular. It is true that this project caps the resale value of, 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 of the home, but it also gets to the purpose of the project, which is to keep it affordable for generations to come. If you can't have both, and something's got to give in that, that kind of a scenario. Generational wealth is important, but keeping housing affordable in our city is important. Housing has gone up so much, my time is up, I see. Half of that was my stuttering though, so I should get extra time, should I not? So I would just like to finish and say, I hope we give Dwelling Place the credit that my nonprofit gave, that they're dealing with integrity, not trying to rip people off, not trying to get rich. I've seen some terrible things on our Facebook page, charges and things like that. So, we do support it. And I support the Bethany project as well, I think they did a great work.
All right, thanks.
Hello, my name is Valerie Machieski. I live at 2023 Union Southeast. I live there with my husband and our two preschool-aged children. I oppose this project for many reasons and will say that I agree with everything that my neighbors had said, except for the first gentleman and the one right before me. I want to bring attention to the children that are living in this neighborhood. So I live on Union, um, in between Burton and Hoyt. And I would say at least every other household has young children, maybe even as young as under 10 in the whole family. Balls go in the road, toys go flying, dogs run out of the house. This sort of thing happens all the time. And we're already very concerned about it because, especially since the road got repaved, people are zooming down the street. So I understand what the traffic study says, that we might not have that significant amount of an increased, uh, car traffic. However, I want us to all think about the speed in which people are going down the road and how that will impact our families. I'm personally terrified for this. I also don't think that our, uh, developers here had done their homework about the neighborhood. That was apparent when we had the community meetings. I've attended every single meeting that has been offered. And I don't feel any more comfortable about this project. I feel less comfortable, actually. In the same meetings, I received mixed messages from people working at different companies. The flyers posted on the, um, doors have been extremely inconvenient and I've had to leave work early in order to go to those meetings and I know a lot of neighbors couldn't make it. Garfield Park is a beautiful neighborhood where people really do care for one another, care for their homes, care about the whole neighborhood in general. I love my neighborhood, I don't want to leave and I think that's why we're all here too, is because we want to stay in our homes. I want to continue seeing Garfield Park thrive and I believe that this project puts our neighborhood in jeopardy.
Hi, my name is Todd Weers. I live at 664 Winchell, right across the street from where the 22 houses are, that driveway, right across the street. I, I grew up in Garfield Park my whole life and recently came full circle and purchased on Winchell. Yes, I agree with all, everything my neighbors have said. I, um, I not opposed to the Bethany. In fact, I was adopted through Bethany Christian Services back in the early 80s, so if it wasn't for them, I probably would not be here. And I have a personal relationship with Jeremy and I think Jeremy is a great guy. I, I have concerns about the density of the project, like many others have stated. The traffic study, I am kind of confused about that. I see 47 trips and we keep on referring to Burton and Eastern when we should be talking about Union, Martin, and Winchell. So we say 47 trips, but is that one car per house? There's probably going to be more than likely two houses per, or two cars per house. They have teenage drivers, they have adult roommates, that's an extra car, plus all the delivery trucks, FedEx, UPS, Amazon. I don't know about you, but unless you've been living under a rock for the past 10 years, I'm sure you've ordered something online. And then when they are just discussing the narrowness of those streets, I don't see how that is up to city code for fire trucks, plows, garbage services, all that stuff. So, um, I'm just kind of going on the whim here. I didn't really write anything down, but I am in total opposition of this project, of this location, and thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Sam Callan. I am a volunteer with the Garfield Park Neighborhoods Association and I am going to read a selection from a letter that we submitted to the commission earlier. "The Board of Directors of Garfield Park Neighborhoods Association recognizes that the rezoning into a planned redevelopment district is of great interest to the neighbors and residents. The property is privately owned and it has been clear since its sale in 2017 that this land would be developed. In a January 2nd, 2018 letter to the Planning Commission, the Garfield Park Neighborhood Association Board closed with the line, 'We look forward to Samaritan joining the neighborhood and we eagerly anticipate future discussions and engagement around the development of the green space on the property.' Unfortunately, GPNA was not engaged from the beginning planning stages of this phase of the development and we did not have an opportunity to speak into the process or voice neighborhood priorities. As it is presented, the Board of Directors at GPNA does not support or oppose this project. We recognize the deep need for affordable housing solutions in Grand Rapids and have a desire to be given a seat at the table to speak into these solutions. However, we are uncertain about the long-term viability of the housing trust model as a tool for generating equity and wealth for the people who purchase these homes. The GPNA Board believes that the zoning process should not be used to exclude people from the wonderful neighborhood of Garfield Park. And we believe that the Garfield Park neighborhood needs to see radical action in order to not only mitigate the displacement of longtime neighbors, but also maintain the cultural and socioeconomic vibrancy that we love by creating access to homeownership for everyone in our community. As such, we look, uh, we look forward to being active participants in any and all affordable housing efforts put forth by private and public institutions to ensure that our neighbors have their voices heard and the complexity of projects such as this one are accurately represented and thoroughly developed into truly equitable solutions for the neighborhood." Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jennifer. Every day I have an unobstructive view of the land they're hoping to destroy. I've lived there 20 years, my community. During that time, I have watched our downtown grow and it has been beneficial to my neighborhood. However, I cannot see how this development will enhance my community. On the contrary, our property value will decrease. There will be more noise, traffic, pollution, litter, nightlight, all to this encompassing eyesore, guess, eyesore invasive to this lovely, peaceful, vintage neighborhood. My neighbors and I take pride in our community and cannot even imagine the amount of disrupt and damage you are proposing to do. Eldra Heights is a very sought-after place to live and you are taking a wrecking ball to its very essence. There are many areas you could develop on. They've done it on Burton, there's lots of parking lots that they could actually enhance that area. It has been done. I don't believe this is the place for your exclusive monetary game. Thank you.
My name is Roger Shuffler and I live at 602 Hoyt, on the southeast corner of Union and Hoyt. And I'll be very brief. I realize this boils down to a legal situation where the reason the city attorney is here. Because personally, I think the motives of everyone involved, developers and so on, have a wonderful motive behind what they're trying to do here. And what they're trying to do is good for a community, good for the people to help themselves. I am totally in favor... themselves. I am totally in favor of all of that. What I do question is the legality of comparing this area here with 42 units that I just want to say I picture walkers in our neighborhood is, I lived in East Grand Rapids, and there was hundreds of walkers. Now in Grand Rapids, in our neighborhood, there are more than hundreds. It's unbelievable, not to count the dogs, but I really appeal to the legal part of the density, and I think it should be cut way, way back, and I don't think it should be compared to other areas of Grand Rapids. It should be compared to the neighborhood that that's in. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Now is your chance.
Hi, I'm Austin Nguyen. I live on 2052 Martin Avenue. I've lived in Garfield Park neighborhood my entire life now, and I just want to echo many of the things my neighbors said, that I think it's just too much density and it'll probably increase the traffic to our neighborhood too much. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? This is the last chance. All right, I will close the public hearing, and I'll invite the applicant or a representative of the applicants up if there's things that they'd like to address.
Just a few things. One, there was questions about street sweeping, snow clearing, that type of thing, and the width of the roads. Typical city alley, where, if you're familiar, particularly with the West Side, there's a lot of alleys that serve, that function for trash and garages and car parking and snow clearing and such, and so their typical width is 14 feet. So the 20-foot width is sufficient to allow two-way traffic for 10-foot lanes, and then you have the parking. So that's, so that for the alley width and how it currently functions is typical of other city streets, smaller city streets. It's not a major street. These are service roads serving the area. There was a question about stormwater. There were soil borings that were done. In fact, there were even investigations done with Environmental Services to see if there was possibilities to build a regional stormwater system on the site, especially in Bethany's corner. Couldn't align with Environmental Services' timeline, but what we did learn is that the site is very sandy. So the mention of stormwater by the one gentleman, stormwater is not a concern. The site beautifully absorbs water and is actually quite unique in this area because there's a lot of clay soil. So that was one of the first things that we did, was investigate the soils to know how we could manage stormwater. I think one of the, one of the challenges, and we do have that slide, I'll go to this, let me think. Of course, I don't know where it is now. It was the density slide. So the, I think one of the challenges you have, I mean, this is a growing city, and you can put all the land trust pieces aside if you wish, but the master plan talks about having a variety of different housing types and price points, trying to serve the growing needs and supporting our business districts, creating population near transit and efficiently using our infrastructure. All of that is based on smart growth principles. And the goal of having Grand Rapids continue to grow and prosper as it has been is really essential, too, for our region, if you want to even talk about farmland preservation and other things. So the change is hard for neighborhoods in trying to facilitate development, especially in these times when you have rising labor costs and supply chain issues and all of those other things. Even without the land trust and the discussions about Dwelling Place, you still have the discussion about the need for density, the efficient use of land, the housing shortage that we have today, and the need for additional development in the city for it to continue to grow. And even per testimony, the business district is challenged, and one of the ways to find those solutions, as you've seen in other neighborhood business districts, Bridge Street's a great example of adding additional density and the benefit that it can bring to a neighborhood with additional people and resources to support the area. You have Garfield Park right down the street, which is a large green space. This project is also proposing a green space at the corner that can be made available to the neighbors, and so we think that that would definitely, that that is a plus for the neighborhood. And I think, lastly, I'll just say, there's probably an educational opportunity for us all to talk about what's the definition of low income and affordable, and what those terms mean, and who we're talking about. That there's just a bigger discussion that needs to have. I think there's some confusion about that, and really talking about the best approach is to serve all of our residents in the city.
All right, thanks, Suzanne. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicants at this time? Nothing. All right. Kristin, do you have anything?
Yeah, and in looking at the comments that were given by the neighbors, I'll just go through and address some of the ones that are within your purview. There was quite a few comments about storage, and we shared that concern with the original concept, and that is why you'll see a recommendation that at minimum, a shed, I believe it's an eight-by-10 shed, should be provided as part of every home that's constructed. While the city does have codes that can address items of value that are left outside for storage and such, we've learned over time through other housing providers that making sure that we provide storage generally is really important, to make sure that houses stay properly maintained and that materials of value have a place to be, to be stored on site. So at minimum, planning staff is recommending that an eight-by-10 shed be provided. Ultimately, I think whether a garage should or shouldn't be provided is more of a discussion for the Planning Commission to determine whether it's appropriate in light of the context of the neighborhood. It is true that several residents, or several properties in that, in those surrounding blocks, do have garages as well. Relative to the, relative to the design of the project, we also shared the concerns. Given the scale of change that would happen with this development, planning staff did not feel comfortable that simply deferring to the LDR Zone District standards was appropriate. We've requested, or in your staff, in your resolution, we've recommended that it does come back for final site plan approval, so that you can see what the specific architecture would be, whether that's through the design guidelines or more of a sampling of X number of homes that could be built on that site. Relative to the maintenance and such of the proposed dedicated public streets, we did have extensive conversation with the Public Works Department and engineering about the proposed layout and how to utilize that space best, and whether it was adequate for fire truck turning templates for the fire trucks or any of the public, public works facility, public works vehicles, pardon me. And ultimately, it was determined that the proposed design, the space, the 20-feet width, is adequate for it to be properly maintained through both fire emergency services vehicle as well as public works. So that was a significant consideration, and we meet through our design team on, it was probably three different occasions, where we reviewed that site plan to make sure that it could properly function for city purposes. I'm not quickly seeing any other comments that I felt the need to address. Oh, the homes on Windchill, I noted that there was a comment about the orientation of that, and you know, we thought about that internally as staff as well, about how the homes should be laid out facing Martin, facing Windchill, and you know, having end blocks and side elevations facing other blocks isn't necessarily inconsistent, but certainly that span of Windchill and the number of homes that would have the side elevation is just a part of the consideration, and that can be mitigated through, mitigated through screening, and I think different mechanisms with setbacks and such should be considered. We also wanted to look at the buffering between the uses, having those parking lots right next to the proposed 42 units was something else considered. So we really pushed Dwelling Place, and they obliged, with looking at whether, having adequate separation with some berms and landscape screening to really provide that increased buffer to separate these uses out a little bit. And I think that's all I have right now.
Okay, Commissioners, if we don't have any other questions for the applicant, then we can begin our discussion. Anyone like to kick us off with their thoughts on the proposed uses?
Well, I think, I don't know, maybe it's the easy way out, but one thing we could discuss first is potentially that parking lot screening between Bethany and the dwelling, proposed Dwelling Place development. Elizabeth mentioned that right now it's proposed to be all evergreen, but that the standards require deciduous in there, too, so I don't know what staff would recommend or what other Commissioners feel about that.
Is that something that could be handled in the LUDS process?
I think the specific vegetation could be reviewed and the species. However, there's a bit of a discrepancy between what's being proposed and what the ordinance would require. So when we look at landscape buffers, it's very specific to the linear foot of that buffer itself, and it really encourages a mix of vegetation. What that does, however, is having that mix maybe not provide that year-round screening that an evergreen row would provide. So clearly, deciduous trees are going to lose their leaves in the fall, and so having that evergreen might serve more as a visual separation between the development. Ultimately, where, when we evaluated this internally, we would refer back to the zoning that, that allowed for that mix of vegetation versus the, kind of that homogeneous screening of the evergreens. The planning, I will note that the Planning Commission does have the ability to make that determination, so if you feel a departure from that evergreen screen is appropriate, excuse me, let me rephrase that. If the departure from the ordinance to allow for the evergreen screen is appropriate, you do have that authority to do so.
Does staff recommend going back to the variety just for like aesthetics or other kinds of reasons? Because it would take away that year-round visual buffer for folks.
It's a little bit of aesthetics, but also just having that mix of species tends to be healthier for the viability and longevity of that screen itself.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
If we want to stay on that subject and maybe just cover the Bethany proposal, how do people, what are people's thoughts on the office building, the height? Doesn't seem to be inconsistent with what's next door. The architecture appears nice, and I feel like that's a good fit and a good way to connect those buildings. It's where I'm at. And I think considering the setback from the existing streets, it's more than appropriate.
I agree.
I have a question about the use of the maintenance building.
Hi, I'm Susan Crack. I'm from Bethany. You're just asking what will be stored in there?
To me, maintenance building might mean something different from someone else. Are there, will there be vehicle maintenance in there? Will there be equipment maintenance in there? What would that look like?
There might be small equipment maintenance, but most of that will be maintained at our national location at, on Eastern, on the northwest side. This is more of, as Dan had mentioned, we have a lot of folks coming through our doors that need in-kind donations, so it's more of a supply space than, than anything else.
Thank you.
I'll speak to the, if we're ready to move on to the housing part of the project. And I appreciate the neighbors and their input and their thoughtfulness about this, and I certainly agree that it's a beautiful part of our wonderful city and want to maintain it. I think that the, while we cannot act as a body on the financing plan of any project, that's not our purview, the lack of affordable housing, and I would characterize this as affordable housing, because people have to pay, I believe, $168,000 to maybe low $200,000, if I'm right in there, you can correct me. Hardly anybody low-income, and given whatever your definition of that is. To me, these are to help modern-income people get a start in owning a house, in being able to afford to live a house, in a house in our city, and we have a lack of that as building prices go up. This is, I've seen this used in other communities, and it has been successful, retaining teachers maybe, or other folks who don't make $100,000 a year and can't afford to buy a $250,000 house, and also keeps that in perpetuity. And so while we don't have a purview over the financing, I believe the density adds to the affordability of housing and adding different opportunities for people to live in great neighborhoods that have a great park like Garfield Park. It also could enhance the business corridors by having more customers and things like that happen. So I am, I am supportive of the project.
I just wanted to note on the density, you know, I realize that there's a variety of ways for us to calculate density, and in the staff report, Elizabeth and I actually gave a lot of thought as to how best to represent that. And I acknowledge that the way we chose to represent it, I think, was maybe more, in my opinion, more intuitive for how people tend to think about density. So there is a discrepancy between how, goodness gracious, to how the application reads, kind of including public right-of-way and not right-of-way, and we decided that, you know, this is a lot of information, and it's an incredibly complicated and large project, and so we tried to distill that and said, if we're solely looking at the blocks around it, let's eliminate right-of-way from the conversation right now, and let's look at the green space that we have in this corner of the property, and really trying to compare apples to apples. And so I apologize if that created confusion and, or it felt like there was discrepancies or untruths in the application. It was, it was really just trying to distill the information and present it in a way that, at least Elizabeth and I, thought would be very digestible for the Planning Commission's consideration.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that thoughtfulness and the, the density presentation. I think when we put, when we tabled this, that was one of the things that I requested be included specifically for this meeting, so I appreciate that. And while it is slightly higher than the surrounding neighborhoods, it's in, it's in line with what is there. I am comfortable with the level of density here, and I'm in support of the project. I think the narrower streets, I'm comfortable with that as well, based on the city staff review and the fact that all the houses will have off-street parking, so no one's going to be parking on these narrow streets. Thank you. So yeah, I'm comfortable with the project, and I'm, I am also supportive of the storage shed requirement, so that folks have a place to store their rakes and mowers or whatever, their bikes, so they're not outside. And yeah, I think I'd like to see final site come back to us as well.
A little preamble to my statements here. I want to say that I'm familiar with this property because between 1964 and 1970, I lived on the property at St. at St. Joseph's Seminary. And between about nineteen eighty and two thousand, I owned a home in the neighborhood. So I understand the concerns that the people, the people who have spoken today have in regards to the nature of the neighborhood. I, I understand, I understand that fully. That being said, I, I have to indicate that as to the Bethany portion of the property, I'm very supportive of that. It fits very well with the scale of the existing buildings in the area. It blends in with the three buildings on the northern part of that area, and I, I think it is a good addition to it. On the condominium area to the south, it is an area where, for at least the last seventy to a hundred years, has always been an open area. And I think the neighborhood has gotten used to that. I mean, anywhere you go in the city, if, if there's vacant land and somebody decides to develop it, we hear the same type of reservations about it. I know with the Veridian Place development on the northeast side, we had that, that going on for a very long time. The problem is in Grand Rapids, we just don't have much land. If not here, where would this go? To find a large piece of property such as this, that's not already a public park, is, is difficult to find. I think that the idea of a final site review is something that is necessary here, particularly to get the, the architectural designs finalized and done. But layout-wise, on Winchell Street, I understand the, the concerns of seeing the sides of those houses, but on Martin, they have basically made the units as if they were building single-family homes across the street. I think the, the general layout here is good. I think our, the traffic department has indicated that there is not going to be significant traffic, and overall, I would approve of and support this.
I guess I have similar comments that my fellow Commissioners have already exhibited. The part that I keep coming back to is, is this compatible, harmonious, and appropriate? I've been thinking about that since this packet was issued, honestly. You know, the neighborhood outcry is obvious. I would like to go back and just mention too, that just because it's green space doesn't mean it's a park, and it's not your private property, it's somebody's private property, and they do get to work within the laws and regulations to develop that, and that's why we're here. So I, I, we really do need to get away from sort of that habit, that just because it's not currently developed, doesn't mean it shouldn't be developed. I think that the Bethany part of the structure also, I'm, there, there hasn't been a lot of sort of public comment on that, not a lot of information in our packet also against it, so I'm pretty, I feel comfortable with that personally and what's going on here, along with everybody else that's talked. I do think final site approval is necessary, and we should require that, so if you're taking a tally over there. Also, I come back to that storage, I mean, we're not a minimalist society, who are we kidding? You know, as much as I think we, we may want to be, I think that that storage isn't something that is, gosh, I even sort of like hesitate on a shed, honestly. But I would be willing to flex on that if that's what the, the good of the order here suggests. I am supportive of, you know, the project as a whole because this is needed and this is appropriate, and we do have very, you know, the confines of our power here is, is very well-developed, and I think this fits within that space. So I almost never agree with Paul down there, but.
[laughter]
It's his last meeting, right? But I would say that I'm in agreeance with that space as per Paul as well.
Our, our LDR zone district does allow for areas of higher density within it, and in fact, our master plan calls for a range of housing types within each of our zone districts, so you, you can't automatically rule out this level of density because of the zone district. That's not to be said that it can't, it can go anywhere, but there are, there is criteria to look at, and that's part of our standards. And when I look through our standards, the one that is, it's pretty easy to find support for this project within all of our standards, except as Adrian mentioned, the question about compatibility, harmony, and appropriate with the existing or planned character and use of the neighborhood. So that's where it turns on for me. I am in support of it. I do think the reviewing the final design is important, especially as a PRD, which is by its definition a special case, and that it's approved as an entire package, and I would not be comfortable approving it without the final design. How do you feel about storage? I believe that storage should be required.
I'm the newbie here. I do have a lot of compassion for the neighbors and this, you know, and their, and their feelings here. I'm also facing this in a community where I live. But I also just understand from that density conversation and from the urban way we're, we live, and the growth of this city, which I have watched over even the past ten years, that, you know, I, I can support a project like this because it does fulfill the need of housing, and it falls within the criteria that we are here to look at. I am not a storage person, but that is a very personal thing. Something comes in our knee, that goes right back out the door. But I know that I am not, I'm not typical in that way. I support, I support the need for storage, absolutely. And I would like to have another look at the design of this before it's finalized.
I agree with much of what my fellow Commissioners have said, and prepared to make a motion if we're ready for that.
Go ahead, Krista.
I just wanted to clarify, we, we've talked a little bit about, you know, having it come back in the final design. As, as planning staff, we were only recommending that the final design relative to the architecture, and I just, I just want to make sure, I'm seeing a lot of heads nod, okay? Because that makes a big difference as to how we move forward in this process, so thank you for that clarification.
And to include any storage buildings.
So proposed building elevations and our design guidelines must be the subject to the final site plan review?
That's how we've recommended it. Our motion, sample motion language also, should you choose to recommend approval, does include the requirement that at minimum an eight-by-ten shed be provided. So when we look at accessory buildings, the accessory buildings architecturally do need to be consistent with the primary structure already, so we can have those designs included in that packet as part of the architecture, but that will be partly inherent with the underlying ordinance. And so, yeah, our, the resolution does include a, a number of considerations. There's a couple ads I might, in looking at this, that I might suggest if, once you're, you're through it, if that's okay.
Sure, absolutely, thank you. All right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep. Whereas the Planning Commission has considered the applicable zoning ordinance standards and finds that the proposed boundary adjustment will not materially affect the previously approved use, and incorporates by reference the findings associated with application PC-PRD-2017-0128 made on January twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen, recommending the adoption of the PRD to the City Commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission approves the request for a major amendment to the approved planned redevelopment district to facilitate the sale and redevelopment of approximately six-point-eight acres of twenty-eighty Union Avenue Southeast. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project. All conditions of approval of ordinance number twenty-eighteen-oh-nine proceeding eight-seven-seven-two of the February twentieth, twenty-eighteen meeting shall remain in effect. That this development shall be subject to the signed regulations for educational government or institutional uses in residential zone districts. Three, that a parking lot landscape buffer shall be planted, which could include a mix of landscape materials along the southerly lot line between the existing parking lot and the proposed public street. Four, that the proposed use will comply with all other applicable city ordinances and policies and all state laws. And five, that this approval shall take effect as required by the City Commission's approval in accordance with section five-point-twelve-point-twelve-point-G of the zoning ordinance. That's the conclusion of my first motion.
Support.
All right, we have a motion in support on that motion. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
That the parking lot landscape buffer shall be planted, which could include a mix of materials along the southerly lot line, not should. Thank you. My next motion, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the request of Bethany Christian Services to establish a new special district planned redevelopment district, SDPRD, at six-seventy Burton Street Southeast and approximately six-point-eight acres of twenty-eighty Union Avenue Southeast to facilitate the construction of a new four-story office building for the following reasons. The proposed use will meet the site plan review standards, section five-point-twelve-point-eight-point-E, because all elements of the site design are harmoniously and efficiently organized in relation to the size and type of lot, character of the neighborhood, and adjoining property. Natural features are incorporated into the proposed site design to the maximum extent practicable, and safe, convenient, and well-defined vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian circulation within and to and from the site is provided. The use and design of the proposed PRD is consistent with the master plan and the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, because the proposed development will be an appropriate use of the property as a support for residential purposes. It is also consistent with the planned and intent, the purpose and intent of the planned redevelopment district to encourage a sensitive design that respects the neighborhood character as well as natural or man-made features of the site and surrounding area, and promotes quality design and environmentally sensitive development. The proposed PRD will ensure efficient development on the property and will result in, in a logical and orderly development pattern in the neighborhood, because the proposed setbacks of the building respect the surrounding development. Adequate connections to existing walkways and public sidewalks are proposed, and the proposed buildings will be placed at setbacks consistent with past development on the site. The proposed development will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the existing or planned character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment, because the proposed building design and high-quality materials meet the characteristics important in the planned redevelopment districts. The project also maintains the neighborhood's unique character, enhances its walkable scale, and reinforces its sense of place. Potentially adverse effects arising from the proposed development on the neighborhood and adjacent properties will be minimized through the provision of adequate screened parking, attractive architecture, and appropriate building orientation and entrances. The proposed development will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future adjacent uses or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic or noise, glare, or visual clutter, because adequate setbacks will be provided from adjacent residential uses. The proposed building will be incorporate, will incorporate adequate transparency and facade variation, and sound and light will be buffered by extensive landscaping. Connections for pedestrians and vehicles are provided via existing driveways and new and existing sidewalks and walkways. The proposed development will retain as many natural features of the landscape as practicable, particularly where the natural features assist in preserving the general character of the neighborhood, because trees and shrubs will be planted on-site to meet the landscape buffer and tree canopy requirements. A significant number of existing trees around the perimeter will be maintained. Adequate public or private infrastructure and services already do exist or will be provided at no additional public cost, and will safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, because the subject property is located in close proximity to public transit and major streets, and is currently served with public utilities. The applicant will be responsible for the construction of any infrastructure improvements necessary to support the development. The proposed development will be, will not be detrimental to the financial stability and economic welfare of the city, because the scale and design of the proposed development does not place an excessive burden on the services currently furnished or may be required by the city. Wherever practicable, the proposed development will provide amenities, including but not limited to park and recreation facilities, urban open space, and non-vehicular connections that serve a public purpose, because the development will maintain significant green space for the visual relief of nearby residents, and pedestrian connections will be provided. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project. One, that the application and plans submitted by the applicant and signed, dated, and stamped by the Planning Director shall constitute the approved plans, except if plan elements do not meet ordinance requirements and/or as amended in this resolution. Two, that a land-use development services or LUDs permit, building permit, and all other required permits be obtained from the City of Grand Rapids prior to construction, demolition, or operation. Three, that the conditions of approval associated with the Board of Zoning Appeals decision PBZA twenty-eighteen-zero-zero-one-two on July tenth, twenty-eighteen shall otherwise remain in effect. That the landscape buffers between the parking lots and the proposed new dwelling units meet the plant material specifications of the requirements of section five-point-eleven-point-twelve. That the land shall be divided according to the submitted plans. Six, that the proposed use will comply with all other applicable city ordinances and policies and all state laws. Seven, that this approval shall take effect as required by the City Commission's approval in accordance with section five-point-twelve-point-twelve-point-G of the zoning ordinance. Do you want me to continue? Okay. Now therefore be it also resolved that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the request of Dwelling Place to establish a new special district planned redevelopment district at six-seventy Burton Street Southeast and approximately six-point-eight acres of twenty-eighty Union Avenue Southeast that includes a forty-two-unit site condominium development for the following reasons. The proposed use will meet the site plan review standards of section five-point-twelve-point-eight-point-E, because all elements of the site design are harmoniously and efficiently organized in relation to topography, the size and type of lot, character of the neighborhood, and adjoining property. Natural features and site topography are incorporated into the proposed site design to the maximum extent practicable. Safe, convenient, and well-defined vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian circulation within and to and from the site is provided. The use, density of development and design of the proposed PRD are consistent with the master plan and the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, because the proposed development supports goals outlined in the master plan's Great Neighborhoods chapter. To GN-three, provide a broad range of high-quality housing choices. GN-three-A, maintain and increase the number and variety of housing units. GN-three-B, allow for new housing products. GN-three-C, allow for a range of housing types within all neighborhoods. And is consistent with the purpose and intent of planned redevelopment districts to encourage a sensitive design that respects the neighborhood character as well as natural or man-made features of the site and surrounding areas, and promotes quality design and environmentally sensitive development. The proposed PRD will ensure efficient development on the property and will result in a logical and orderly development pattern in the neighborhood, because the proposed setbacks of the proposed homes respect and are consistent with the surrounding development, and adequate connections to existing walkways and public sidewalks are proposed, and that the proposed buildings will re-establish the street wall. The proposed development will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the existing or planned character and uses or planned character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment because the proposed building design and high-quality materials meet the characteristics important in the planned redevelopment district. The development will result in an appropriate density for the site, and the project maintains the neighborhood's unique character, enhancing its walkable scale, and reinforcing its sense of place. Potentially adverse effects arising from the proposed development on the neighborhood and adjacent properties will be minimized through the provision of adequate on-site parking, appropriate building orientation, entrances, and design. The proposed development will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future adjacent uses or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic or noise, glare, or visual clutter because the street network is adequate to support any traffic increases. The site is located near public transit, and single-family development does not generally generate excessive noise, glare, or visual clutter. Connections for pedestrians and vehicles are provided via new streets for vehicles and by walkways from the street to the building for pedestrians. The proposed development will retain as many natural features of landscape as practicable because quality trees, as defined by the tree survey, will be retained wherever possible, and adequate green space and stormwater detention will be provided. Adequate public or private infrastructure and services already exist or will be provided at no additional public cost and will safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of the public because the subject property is located in close proximity to public transit and major streets and is currently served with public utilities. The applicant will be responsible for the construction of any infrastructure improvements necessary to support the development. The proposed development will be, will not be detrimental to the financial stability and economic welfare of the city because the scale and design of the proposed development does not place an excessive burden on services currently furnished or that may be required by the city. Wherever practicable, the proposed development will provide amenities, including but not limited to park and recreational facilities, urban open space, and non-vehicular connections that serve a public purpose because the development will maintain significant green space for the visual relief of nearby residents. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project. One, that the application and plans submitted by the applicant and signed, dated, and stamped by the planning director shall constitute the approved plans, except if plan elements do not meet ordinance requirements and/or as amended in this resolution. Two, that a land-use development services or LUDs permit, building permit, all other required permits be obtained from the City of Grand Rapids prior to construction, demolition, or operation. Three, that building elevations shall reflect the character of the built environment in the vicinity, and that final site plan review shall be required for purposes, for proposed building elevations and/or design guidelines. The submittal shall be accompanied by a detailed description of the specific reference points used in the proposed designs. Four, that a shed of at least 80 square feet in area or a garage shall be constructed concurrently with each dwelling unit. Five, the hours of construction shall not extend past 8:00 p.m. Six, that the property shall be divided according to plan. Seven, that the development shall meet the requirements of section 5.12.13.G for the setting of boundary monuments and construction and dedication of infrastructure. That prior to the issuance of a LUDs and/or building permit for any site work or building the master deed and articles of incorporation for the Condominium Association shall be submitted. Nine, that the proposed use will comply with all other applicable city ordinances and policies and all state laws. Ten, that this approval shall take effect as required by city commission approval in accordance with section 5.12.12.G of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Any motion in support? Any discussion? Did you want to clarify the?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that it was a motion to recommend approval. So I wasn't sure if I heard that, so I apologize. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Absolutely.
And then relative to the first conditions that spoke to the Bethany development, I was wondering if two additional conditions of approval could be considered, and that would be, first, that the development shall be subject to the signed regulations for educational government or institutional uses in residential zone districts. That would effectively allow Bethany to have some minimal signage, should they choose.
So I think that was included in the first motion.
It was included in the first one, but that's specific to the Samaritan's Development.
Okay, yep, so that needs to be included in the second motion.
Thank you. And then the, the second is to speak, just to make it clear for the record, that the construction of the 28 parking spaces, again, the Bethany portion, may be permitted subject to section 51004e, that effectively grants the authority to defer those spaces.
Yes, that should be included in the third motion.
Second.
Second motion.
Second.
It would be the, the first part of the second motion.
Okay. Yes. Still supportive.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, our next case is 2929 Leonard Street Northwest. And I believe we have a new presenter.
All right, our next case is at 2929 Leonard Street Northwest. Westview Christian Reformed Church is requesting approval to install an electronic message center to replace an existing ground sign that they have. The church property is located in the MONLDR Zone District. In residential zone districts, the signs may be administratively approved if they meet certain criteria, however, the sign that we are looking at today does not meet this criteria and thus requires special land use approval. And as you can see from the aerial map, the church is surrounded by those residential uses, and that is, part of the reason it is here today. Going into the proposed sign, the new ground sign is proposed to serve as an identification sign and message center for the Westview Christian Reformed Church. The proposed sign does meet height, area, and setback requirements as it is replacing an existing sign. The height is proposed to be six feet tall, and the total area of the electronic messaging center is 30.6 square feet. And then is setback 15 feet from the lot line, which is required. As required, the changeable copy portion of the sign will not exceed that 50% of the total sign area, and as you can see on the screen, there is this white border that also gives a little bit of a buffer for the messaging center. The sign will be no nearer to the 15 feet from the lot line. It will also be located outside of the clear vision area. And the sign must operate within the display regulations and light level requirements of section 5.15.10.10c, which prohibits the operation of the sign between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. if directly visible from residential uses, and it is directly Along with that, some of the display and lighting regulations were included in the packet. No neighborhood correspondence has been received to date, either opposing or for the project of the sign. In some, Westview CRC is requesting approval for an electronic messaging center to be incorporated into a new ground sign. The planning commission should consider any neighborhood concerns as expressed by the public hearing, if there is any, and then any potential impacts on nearby residential properties.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Do we know how big the current sign is? And is this going to be placed in the same exact spot where the current sign is?
It will be in the same spot. Elizabeth, do you know the size of the current sign?
I think the applicant.
Yes, the applicant will speak to that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. I'll have the applicant come up then and maybe address that and anything else they'd like to bring to our attention.
Good afternoon. Court Alexander with Midwest Sign Company, representing the church. I'll first just speak to the question about the existing sign. It's roughly five feet tall by 10 feet wide, so the new sign would be slightly taller, but it would be less width, and I thought it was worth noting that the existing sign is a V-shaped structure that's kind of oriented towards the road from both directions of traffic, so this new sign would be considerably smaller as, as an overall footprint, excuse me. And then, again, just kind of recapping, that was a good summary of the situation, but the church has this existing sign that is, frankly, it's just out of date. They've been raising money over the last couple of years to replace the sign and wanted to incorporate an LED message center, which is, as most people probably know, becoming more popular, almost standard in churches in some regards. But the new sign would need to be replaced, in, in the church's opinion, in that it's just, it's old and needs work. She did summarize this, but the, the church is aware that the use of the digital message center would have to be in compliance with rules set forth for digital signs, namely the 50% of the sign area. No message can take more than five seconds to, to show up on the sign, and then once it's there, it has to be, remain static for five minutes, and I've gone over this with the church staff, and they're more than willing to comply. Again, I'm assuming that if there is any opposition, it would be regarding light from the residents, and, and they are aware that the sign would have to be off at 11:00 p.m. and can't turn on until 6:00 a.m. Again, they're more than willing to, to comply. That is all I have for right now, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Are those, like the, that the sign has to be off at 11:00, those restrictions, are they programmable in the sign? So will you, as the sign installer, be programming that for them to ensure that, or help ensure compliance?
Yeah.
I think that's the biggest issue with electronic signs in residential areas, is compliance.
Correct. The customer purchased with the sign, they purchased software that is programmable, and I would be an aide to teach them how to program it that way, and I would make sure that it's done that way.
Thank you.
And one more point, the, the, not only the regulations on how long messages or, or what they can be, there's also some lighting regulations, which is programmable within the software, and that's been discussed as well.
I was curious, so just for the commission's information, when a sign permit is pulled, the owner actually does have to sign a form and do a checklist to make sure that the owner understands those operational restrictions. So while I think it's, it's very appreciative that you're willing to lend your technical support, there is kind of that ongoing reminder, we hope, to the owner. I was just curious, since this is in a modern era neighborhood, our light levels are really low because there's not, you know, we've got larger lots, there's, street lighting is pretty sporadic relative to other areas of the city, and I'm just wondering whether any consideration was given to further restrict the hours of operation to see whether the sign could be turned off closer to like a 9:00 p.m. versus an 11:00 p.m.?
While the church and my customer would prefer that they get the full range of hours, they're willing to comply if that's a condition needed to, to approve. And actually, the, just the build of the sign, it's a little technical as far as the, the sign industry, but the, the upper static portion that displays their logo was specifically designed to emit less light than if the whole face were to light. So that was taken into consideration by both the church and Midwest Sign Company as we knew this would, would come up.
Is this area lit with streetlights?
Yeah, some. It might also be worth noting that the existing sign is internally illuminated, and the sign face of the existing sign, that lights is a little bit larger than what our sign would light. Obviously, not apples to apples as far as the, I don't know, I can't speak to the, the brightness of the current bulbs, but the, the actual surface area that's lighting would be reduced with the new sign.
Do you know if there's been community outreach or?
Truthfully, I don't, I don't know that.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here today on this case, please come forward, state your name, and share your brief thoughts with us.
Hello, my name is Renee Bailey. I reside at 2866 Leonard. I've owned a home there for 22 years, and I am across the street and a little bit east of the church. There was no outreach by the church to anybody. All we got was the green card from the city. I am opposed to an electronic message center. This is a residential neighborhood. There are no other electronic message centers in our neighborhood. We do have other signs that are not electronic, and I feel that it would be a slippery slope for the next person to come along and say, "We want one too." The other thing is, is that I believe that a message center like this would significantly lower my property value because compared to similar homes that don't have to look at one across the street from them. I've spoken with other neighbors, and they feel the same way. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here today. The other thing is, the church is very, very visible, and I don't doubt that they, they're good people. I don't doubt that they want a new sign, and they should have one, but to tell you the truth, they have not changed the messagings on their sign that they put out in November for their November blood drive, so I don't see where there's a need for an electronic message center, you know, if they're not going to use it. And my question to the church, if they were here, is, is this a matter of convenience? Is it really necessary? And what is their objective in having this sign? Is it to attract more congregants? What, what is the purpose of this, before you go any further? And has it been proven it can attract more congregants? Is there empirical, objective evidence to that? And also, what positive effects will this have for our neighborhood as a whole? How will it enhance our neighborhood? To Kristen, I would like to say thank you for recommending that if, you know, if the church would consider having expanded hours of shutdown for this, this is already an area of extremely high light pollution. I have pictures to that effect, and the church is culpable for a lot of that, as are the new streetlights. So that's pretty much all I have to say, is that I am opposed, and I would appreciate that if you do decide to go ahead and grant them this, that you do require that they have a higher window of having it closed every day. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on this case? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Did you have something you want to do, mention? Come on up, that's fine.
I just wanted to quickly address two of the questions brought up about the use of the sign. One, made reference to them not changing the current sign, and I would just say that the new sign would be changeable from anywhere with internet connection and wouldn't require people to be on-site, so I think they would be used much more frequently if they were to be granted it. And two, the benefit, one, it's just to express things that they feel important about church events coming up, but two, another benefit that I might say would be that the new sign, I alluded this earlier, but the new sign's just old and needs work to begin with, and this would, to me, be more visually appealing than what's currently there.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, you don't have the ability to do that. The public hearing is already closed. All right, thank you. Okay, commissioners, any additional questions or dialogue?
I guess just a quick question. So this would have been approved administratively if certain conditions were met, and when I look at it, most of the conditions were met, but can you tell me how far the sign is from an adjacent residential use? Is it, I know it's probably more or less than 175 feet, but is it close?
So the sign, quick measurements, the sign, it's between the sign and the structure at 2861- at 2861 Leonard is approximately 194 feet, which is the structure immediately to the east. Approximately, this close sign to the structure to the west is 204 feet. And then, if I were to go directly across the street, and that view's changing, across the street is approximately 200 feet as well.
Okay. So, other than the electronic portion being more than 35%, it meets all the other conditions for administrative approval? Fair?
Mallory Elizabeth?
Thirty-two, it's 32 square feet or less. It's 13 square feet or less in terms of the electronic display. It's at least 175 feet from an adjacent. I guess I'm just trying to point out that, but for the fact that more than 50% of the sign will be electronic, we wouldn't even be here today. It would be subject to the elements of administrative approval, right?
That's true. Several years ago, electronic message centers generally in residential zone districts all came before the planning commission. And so, as a commission, you work to define, kind of looking at your past decision-making, and kind of setting that threshold to say, "Well, if it's," and I'm paraphrasing, of course, "if it's a smaller sign, then the impact arguably would be less. However, if we get to that certain point of size, then the impact could be greater, and therefore, the planning commission wanted to see those on a case-by-case basis." So, you are correct that it almost meets the threshold, but because it doesn't, that's where we pause and look at what impact could be had by the sign to the surrounding area.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I have a comment. I'm troubled by the fact that the church did not do any outreach, given that they are surrounded, you know, across the street, on either side of them. I think that would have been a courtesy, and given the concerns expressed in the public hearing, I'm not inclined to support this at this time.
Is that because of the lack of public outreach?
The church is, yes.
That's why you're...
Opposed.
Opposed, okay.
And I also, the concerns that were posted, I have those concerns, too.
I think it's pretty common that we don't have community outreach on sign proposals or even sign packages. So, I don't think that that's necessarily an expectation that we've laid out there for applicants. And, you know, frankly, in the past, I've tried to fight against electronic message centers, because I don't think they fit in neighborhoods necessarily. But, I think with appropriate usage and controls over the light levels and things like that, you know, I understand the benefits of them. And so, I'm curious about the restriction, a more strict time placed on them versus other applicants. And if that's something that we've done in the past, I don't recall that necessarily. But, I don't think, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I can't think of a similar scenario, though, where all of the facts are the same. In looking at this, the street lighting levels are very low. The property itself is pretty wide open, meaning that you've got this expanse of green space before you hit the building. There is no significant landscaping. It's at the minimum setback. So, for me, it was just what would those lighting levels do to the surrounding area, being so close, being that it is a little bit larger than what the ordinance defined as a permitted-by-right. It was just something for consideration.
I think Leonard Street has recently gotten the LED lighting. My daughter lives at Walker and Leonard and Wilson area, and I travel that at night, and it is much brighter now that the LED lighting is there.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Leonard Street is different than some, you know, residential areas that we see these applications in. I think it is brighter here than, for example, St. Anthony's on Richmond, where it's much darker than this, from streetlights and cars and everything else. So, I'm not sure how much more this will contribute to light in the evenings. But, I've also seen signs that don't meet the ordinance requirements on light levels, and it's awful. But, you know, with assurances that the owner and the installer understand how to control those things, I don't think it's a huge problem here.
Yeah, I generally, I'm not a fan of electronic messaging signs, really anywhere, but especially in residential areas. I, yeah, I would have liked to see further setback or other kind of sensitivities to the residential around. But, I, yeah, like the person who expressed their public comment, I don't really, I'd like to see some empirical evidence that these actually do anything other than disrupt kind of the aesthetics and light issues in the neighborhood. But, I also acknowledge that it is the way things are many places now, and, yeah, so.
My only concern is the operator usage, as has been expressed. And I don't think that electronic message sign screams commercial zone district today, like you might have thought it would have.
I think it really is about the timing. The rules that we have in place to restrict how often that copy can change makes a huge difference. There's a couple of other Leonard Street sign users that don't follow the rules, and it's obvious. It does give off that impression of like, you know, flashy, commercial area. But, in general, you don't see that. Most people are following the rules, and I don't think it's a huge detriment.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't become a huge enforcement issue, then, fine.
Anyone feel real strongly about this? Want to make a motion?
I think Christine should make a motion.
I'll make the motion to, how do we do this in this one? Do we have to read the whole kit and caboodle? "Now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission approves the request of second..." I'm on the wrong one. Pardon me, let me back up here. "...the special land use and site plan review, request of Westview Christian Reform Church to incorporate an electronic message center into a new ground sign at 29 Leonard Street Northwest for the following reasons." I'm going down the line here? Okay. "The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use will permit timely and immediate messaging for activities and notices. The proposed use will meet the site plan review standards of Section 5.12.08.E, because the proposed sign is to meet all setback, area, and height requirements. The proposed use will be compatible and harmonious and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment, because the proposed sign will be scaled, excuse me, cited and architecturally designed in a manner consistent with the character and development within the area. The proposed use will not have potentially adverse effects on the neighborhood, because the proposed sign replaces an existing ground sign on the site. The proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses, or to the public welfare by reason of excessive glare or visual clutter, because electronic sign functions will operate in accordance with the regulations for electronic message centers. And the proposed new sign will meet all requirements of the zoning ordinance. The building and site area required for the proposed use will retain as many natural features of the landscape as practicable, particularly where the natural features assist in preserving the general character of the neighborhood. The proposed sign is in the same location as the existing. So, no additional disturbance is not necessary. The proposed use will safeguard the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the public, because sign placement will not interfere with pedestrian travel and vehicular movements. Lighting levels will be limited under operational requirements of the zoning ordinance. The proposed development will not place excessive burden on services currently furnished or may be required by the city or other public agency, because there will be no effect on the facilities or services of the city. Be it, am I, keep going here? "Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project. Number one, standard conditions, Set A approvals."
So, typically, this being our second case, you would just need to reference the Set A approvals, but I don't think that was referenced in our first set of motions. So, you will need to read the non-bold text.
Wow, is this some sort of easy opportunity here?
Yeah, you can blame Commissioner Joseph.
They did it to me my first meeting.
Okay, here we go. Number one, that the application and plans submitted by the applicant and signed, dated, and stamped by the planning director shall constitute the approved plans, except if plan elements do not meet ordinance requirements and/or as amended in this resolution. Number two, that the use shall operate according to the application and per testimony as recorded in the planning commission minutes. Number four, that a land use development services, LUDs, permit, building permit, and all other required permits be obtained from the city of Grand Rapids prior to construction, demolition, or operation. Number five, that any expansion of the approved special land use requires an additional special land use review, an approval by the planning commission. Number six, that the proposed use will comply with all other applicable city ordinances and policies and all state laws. Number seven, that this approval shall take effect 16 calendar days from the date of the planning commission's decision. Oh.
And then, just number two.
That the proposed sign will comply with all operational requirements of Section 5.15.10, changeable copy signs, including display regulations, light levels, and permitting requirements.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have support for that motion?
Support.
Did you want that, Commissioner? Okay, so, support?
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. All right, we have motion and support. Do we have any discussion?
Just one comment on number, I believe it was four. It was stated that a LUDs permit was required, and if that could be stricken or reread to say, state that all other permits be obtained from the city of Grand Rapids prior to construction, demolition, operation, or operation. We don't need a LUDs permit or a building permit for this, so I apologize. But, an electrical permit might be needed. So, if we could rephrase that to be a little more narrow, I think that would be appropriate.
What she said.
Okay. That a land use development services, not that part?
No, it would just read, "That all other required permits be obtained from the city of Grand Rapids prior to construction, demolition, or operation."
Got it. "That all other required permits be obtained from the city of Grand Rapids prior to construction, demolition, or operation."
Still support.
All right, any other discussion? Was there a desire to limit this to nine o'clock instead of 11 o'clock? I should ask you as the motion maker.
I did not desire that.
Nor do I.
Okay, then, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mallory, for your work on this. This was Mallory's first planning commission case. And unfortunately for us, her internship will end at the end of the year. So, this might be the last time you all see her. So, thank you.
You're welcome to come back, you know, even if your internship's over.
We would love her to stay on.
All right. Next case is 1120 Knapp Street Northeast, Suite B.
The next item on the agenda is 1120 Knapp Street Northeast. Second Chance Cats of West Michigan is requesting approval to establish a cat adoption center in an existing shopping center. And animal services, such as adoption clinics, require special land use approval in most all zone districts, including this one. It is located near the intersection of Fuller and Knapp in a C mid-century neighborhood, commercial zone district. There is residential property around and to the north, although you can't see it, we do have Fair Plains Cemetery. To the south and the west is residential, and to the east is commercial. So, the, the commercial shopping center, which is right here on the slide, on the lower part of the slide, consists of three tenant suites. The applicant is leasing a, I think it's the center suite, 962 square feet. One suite in the shopping center is occupied by Two Scott's Catering operation. The other suite is vacant. The three suites on the property share 21 parking spaces. There's a covered trash bin that's shared among the tenants. And sort of important relative to this application, the ventilation system is separated between the three suites. The adoption center is intended to be used as temporary housing of adoptable cats for sale. No outside renovations are proposed to the building. The space has three separate free-roaming rooms to house the cats, and a double-entry doorway has been added to prevent any animals from escaping. Hours of operation are relatively limited, Wednesday through Friday, 11 to 2, and Saturday, Sunday, 11 to 4, as well as appointments being accepted as needed. The shelter is registered and overseen by the Michigan Department of Agriculture. There's 21 parking spaces on the site, and that is sufficient for the three uses on the property. The applicant has reached out to their direct neighbors, Two Scott's Catering. I haven't received any correspondence to date. So, in sum, we're looking at an animal services use, a cat adoption center in a mid-century neighborhood, commercial zone district.
All right, thanks, Elizabeth. Any questions? All right, thank you. I'll have the applicant up if there's any other details you want to share with us.
Hi, my name is Laura Moody. I'm the owner-director of Second Chance Cats of West Michigan. I'll keep this short. It seems like it's been a really long day. I'm just super passionate about saving cats. I've been working in cat rescue for years, and I know all the rules. I will follow all the rules. We'll keep it a good place for people to come. And thank you very much for your time.
Great, thanks. Any questions for the applicant?
Just real quick, were you in another location beforehand?
No, we, we're a new rescue. I just started up this year. I previously... I previously had been working for Carol's Ferals, which has closed down, so yes, that's my experience.
Thank you.
I have a question as it relates to operation. So you referenced that you'll run a good operation. How much discretion is there from the, the operator versus what's required, say, by a regulator since the use runs with the land? So we often have this question as it relates to alcohol operations, but my question is, if you were to sell this location and somebody else were to come in and operate, how would we know that they would operate it as well as you would?
Oh, that's a great question. I have no plans of, of having anyone, you know, buy it out or, or operate it in my place. I would definitely show the utmost discretion if I were to do something like that, which I don't have any plans of, and just make sure that they will follow all our rules and regulations that we have as far as keeping up the building, the number of cats that they can have in there at one time, and sanitation processes, which are, would still be overseen by the Department of Agriculture. They come in and make sure that everything is, is up to their standards as far as caring the cats and, and making sure that everything's properly sanitized and taken care of.
So it sounds like there's regulations in place.
Right. Yeah, are they like yearly inspections, or how, how often do you get inspected?
Yeah, it's yearly inspections, and then, since we're a new one, they would, they would come in first, and then six months later, kind of follow up and make sure that everything's running smoothly.
All right, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here today on this case and would like to share some thoughts, please come forward, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Hi there, my name is Maureen. I have been working with Laura to get this rescue going for about probably almost a year now. We've been looking for buildings, looking for neighborhoods where this would be congruent. I think an important thing to say about this operation is that all of the cats the Second Chance takes are cats that were abandoned. These are all cats that came from the streets, and we work with lots of people that trap abandoned animals in Grand Rapids. We work with a shelter. These are animals that would die without the help that Laura's providing. It's 100% foster-based. All these cats are in foster homes. I have six of them in my home, and they're, they're basically feral cats. They've gone feral because they've been trying to survive in this environment. Just today, a stupid trailer park has a whole trailer full of cats. They want me to come and get for them. So this is badly, badly needed in Grand Rapids. This is a, a community service, really, to recycle all of these animals that have been discarded by people. It's really a worthy project, and it is a 501(c)(3) organization. This is Laura's organization that she founded. She has no intention of passing this off to anyone else. She's doing a great service for the city.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Chris Boashane. I have been working with Laura with the cat rescue since its inception, since we were still applying for our 501(c)(3). One of the big areas our shelter works with that sets us apart is working with local municipal shelters as well to take in cats that have been deemed to be put to euthanasia, to give them a second chance at life. Right now, we have an upper limit to how much we are able to support the greater West Michigan community in those works because of the fact that we are limited to working as a foster-based, a foster-only-based organization at the moment. Our hope is that with this permit, we would be able to further expand our operations to better support the needs of the community, and with the combined decades of experience of our leadership team and volunteer team, as well as the constant oversight from the Department of Agriculture, would be a minimal risk to the building or the animals within it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else on this case? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any additional questions for the applicant or discussion?
Go ahead. Okay. Oh, I, I think this is an appropriate location for this. It sounds like it's a use that's really needed in our community, and I appreciate that the ventilation systems are different in the, for each of the suites in the building, but I find it appropriate and would be happy to make a motion.
All right, any other comments? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission approves the request of Second Chance Cats of West Michigan, Laura Moody, for site plan review and special land use approval to establish a cat adoption clinic at 1120 Knapp Street Northeast for the following reasons. The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent on the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use will provide a mix of uses in an existing shopping center, foster a strong economy, and enrich the lives of city residents and visitors, and improve the quality of life in the city. The proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment, because the proposed use will support the desired future character of the neighborhood by providing a variety of personal services. The proposed use will not have adverse effects on the neighborhood because adequate parking will be provided. The customer entrance is oriented away from nearby residences. Nearby residential uses are already separated from the use by fencing, retaining walls, and grade changes. The proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic, noise, or odors, because operating hours are relatively limited and trash will be regularly removed from the The proposed use will not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment, because the site is already improved with the retail building, and the site is already part of the sidewalk system. Adequate public or private services, or private infrastructure and services already exist or will be provided at no additional cost because the proposed use will be adequately served by existing public or private infrastructure. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the financial stability and our economic welfare of the city because the use will not place an unfair burden on city services, and the use will, may encourage other investment in the area. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply, standard conditions set A approvals, which should show up on the screen momentarily. Standard conditions set A. Thank you. And two, that general hours of operation are Wednesday to Friday from 11 to 2, and Saturday to Sunday, 11 to 4, with appointments accepted as needed.
All right, thank you. We have motion and support. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you. Our last case is 252 Dale Street Northeast. And...
Apologies, I have to run to a meeting, so I'm going to swap out with Tyler. Have a good evening.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request from Nathaniel Williams, who is requesting approval to operate a rooming house in an existing single-family home. The, this is before you today because rooming houses require special land use approval. The subject property is located on Dale in a TN LDR neighborhood just west of the TNTBA Zone District on Plainfield. The house, or the property is sort of triangular in area, and it's located on an alley. Just to the west, we have, you know, medium-density, single-family residential, and to the east, we have a credit union. So a rooming house. In my tenure here, we really haven't had a request like this. A, a rooming house is defined as a single-family detached dwelling, which is owner-occupied, must be owner-occupied, and serves as the principal residence, residence of the owner, where are occupied by individuals who are not related by blood, marriage, or adoption to the owner, where two or more rooms are occupied under separate rental agreements or leases, and where communal facilities such as a kitchen or bathroom are available to occupants, and it's not a hotel, a motel, or a bed and breakfast. So in addition, there are some use regulations for rooming houses. There shall be no more than four rooms occupied by tenants. Occupancy by tenants shall generally be for expected durations longer than a week. Rooms shall not contain independent cooking facilities, and no more than one individual shall occupy a rental room. Additionally, rooming houses do require licensing, annual licensing by the office of the city clerk. That's similar to bed and breakfasts as well. The applicant is not proposing to make any changes to the layout of the home. I found two different numbers of rental rooms in the application materials. Sometimes I saw three, and sometimes I saw four, so I'd like the applicant to confirm that, and if you are amenable to this request, then please specify that in the resolution of approval. The applicant will furnish the rooms, and each of the rooms will have, you know, door locks, and will, and each room will, each tenant will have a separate lease agreement, either six-month or 12-month duration. Rooming and boarding houses require one parking space per room, assuming that three rooms will be rented. Three parking spaces are required for the three rented rooms, plus an additional space for the owner for, for parking spaces. So the site can accommodate the four parking spaces, although it does look a little bit tight, but the site plan does show four parking spaces. I do want to mention a couple of things. Just, like I said, we, we really haven't looked at a rooming house like this. I, I do remember, I don't know that we have any licensed rooming houses right now in the city. I remember there was one that was licensed for years, although, you know, the, the ownership has changed, and it's no longer licensed as a rooming house. In that situation, it wasn't owner-occupied, but that was a non-conforming use from days gone by. You might ask, you know, what is the difference between this and just, you know, a single-family rental? Our zoning ordinance allows up to four unrelated people to live together as a household. That doesn't mean, you know, if you have a family of six, eight, or 12 people that are related by, you know, blood or marriage, clearly you can all live together in that household. But if you, if you are just a group of unrelated adults living together, no more than four individuals can live together as that household. Generally, we, not generally, we do require that, that the house, you know, have one lease, and it shall be leased to all the individuals living there. No doubt, there are situations around town where people do skirt these regulations. We find unregulated or unapproved rooming houses all the time, or our code compliance department does, but legally, no more than four unrelated people may live together. We did talk to Mr. Williams about his options, and we did say that, you know, he's allowed to take roommates, you know, he's the owner, he can have roommates, but this was the route that he chose, and I'm sure he can explain why he's chosen this route. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them or turn them over to the applicant.
All right, thanks, Elizabeth. Any questions at this time, commissioners?
I had the same kind of question. I'm sure I even know people who live together, but they don't have a permit to do this. Is this something that's enforced by the city?
No, it's not that you can't live together.
Okay.
You...
Like four unrelated people?
Yeah, of course you can live together. You can, four, no more than four unrelated people can live together. I think a lot of that has, you know, some cities go up to maybe six. I think, you know, some of that has to do with the, the uni, the local university crowd, and the, and the impacts that it has on a neighborhood when you have more than four unrelated people together. But absolutely, four, four unrelated people can rent a house together. The difference is leasing rooms separately.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Elizabeth. I'll have the applicant up if there's other details you want to share with us.
Good afternoon. I'm Nathaniel Williams, and I am the owner of 252 Dale Street. I moved into the Creston neighborhood a year ago, December 21st. When I was 25, I'm 32 now, when I was 25, in the Oakdale community, I bought my first house, also being the first person in my family to buy a house. I grew up in Grand Rapids, and in buying my first house, my younger cousin and best friend moved in with me. And with helping them just get on their feet regarding getting their first apartments and first cars, it led to helping brothers in the church as well. And from there, helping my aunt and uncle get prepared to pay off their debt, building up credit, and buy their first house. That led me down the avenue to ask, why am I in this situation to where I'm helping and reaching back out to others? And as I look at my own testimony, going to Grand, Grand Rapids Community College in the year 2009, I didn't realize I was at risk until it was too late to find stability for myself. That brings me here today with going for a home occupation Class C permit, if approved, to advance that purpose and, and take, take advantage of the opportunity of the affordable housing in the, in the new property that I have to, to be support, be supportive of those students who may be going through the same thing that I went through. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Could you just clarify, is it three bedrooms that are going to be rented out to others? Okay.
Yes, it'll be three bedrooms rented out, and the price for those bedrooms individually is $450.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here today on this case and would like to share your thoughts, please come forward, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hello, commissioners, I'm Kevin Jones. I'm in support of my neighbor. I live on the opposite side of Dale Street that he does. To my knowledge, there's 10 homes on the north side and nine homes on the south side, and of those 19 homes, I believe 25% are already rentals, so it's not a stretch to grant him a variance. And I want to speak on the other end of the spectrum. As a father trying to find affordable housing for my college-age sons, it's tough. It is really tough. He has a perfect location. We're right on a bus line. One block away is the nearest stop. There's a laundromat one block away. If I had a home with, with multiple bedrooms, I'd be doing, I'd be here asking for the same thing. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Just to confirm, your name is Kevin Jones? Okay, you said it as you were walking up, and it wasn't, wasn't easy to hear. All right, anyone else on this case? I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
You know, we talk a lot about, when I was reading this application, and I too thought, oh, rooming homes were a thing of the past. I remember reading about them in the past, but what a great opportunity to provide affordable housing in a way that I hadn't thought about, and adding to the amount of, you know, housing that's accessible, particularly to students. So I admire this idea and hope that this is an example that maybe catches on in some places. that maybe catches on in some places.
All right, anyone else have comments? Or Commissioner Wallace, it looks like you might be ready to read a motion?
You know it. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission approves the site plan review and single land use request of Nathaniel Williams to operate a rooming house in an existing single-family home at 252 Dale Street Northeast for the following reasons. The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use will increase the number and variety of housing units in the city. The proposed use will not adversely affect surrounding neighbors because no exterior changes are proposed. The proposed use will meet the site plan review standards of 5.12.08.e because the current zoning standards were designed to be consistent with the built environment. No site changes are proposed. The proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment because the exterior of the site will remain unchanged. The proposed use will support the desired future character of the neighborhood as demonstrated by neighbor support. The proposed use will not have adverse effects on the neighborhood because adequate parking will be provided and alternative transportation is available nearby. The proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses or to public welfare or reason of excessive traffic, noise, visual clutter, because the use will similarly, will operate similarly to any other single-family home. The number of residents will be relatively few and the use will be subject to nothing else, apparently. The proposed use would adversely, would not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or otherwise hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment because the sitting of the existing structure is typical of the TN neighborhood classification and parking is located off the alley. The proposed development will retain as many natural features of landscape as practicable because the site is previously developed and any alterations will have minimal additional impact on the environment. Adequate public or private infrastructure and services do already exist and would not be provided at additional cost because this is a previously developed site and existing infrastructure is adequate as is. The proposed use would not be detrimental to the financial stability and economic welfare of the city because the proposed use is not anticipated to function any differently than a typical single-family home. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project, as shown on the screen. Standards conditions set A approvals. And that two, the layout of the single-family home shall remain unchanged with no more than three bedrooms being rented to unrelated occupants. And that concludes my motion. I said support, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and support. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, thank you. I'll open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone like to share any comments? Now's the chance. I'll close the public comment. Commissioner Greenwald, thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure serving with you. Speech?
I was just going to say, it's been interesting. I went from approving marijuana dispensaries to approving a cat house.
So perfect for you, that's great. Well, thank you, I hope you can enjoy your retirement from this sort of public service and get back into the neighborhood.
I suspect you'll see me again because Nika's already after me.
All right, that's great. Any other business, staff, commissioners? Are we back at 11:20? Let's not.
I think it's the second January meeting that we're back at 11:20.
The longer we can push that, the better, honestly.
It's like four or five meetings next year, but the rest are here.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, we're adjourned.